Okay. It's not there now. The word of it. Are y'all ready?
Ready.
Everybody had a chance to get them something to drink, something to eat. It's only been about 12 hours since we sat around and talked about what we're going to talk about today. So appreciate everybody being here and thank you, Amy and all the staff for putting all this together. And of course, thank Russ, our facilitator, for helping us work through this process. One of the things we did last night was go around and say a little bit about ourselves and get everybody a sense of who we were and a little bit about our background and what motivation we had for being willing to serve in this capacity. And Mike was unable to be with us last night.
You didn't put me on the spot the first thing in order. No, you lost.
But being a former newspaper editor, he's never unprepared. So I thought what we do before we got started is give Mike, John Henning, our attorney, a chance to say a little bit about who they are. If y'all don't know about most people know who you are. But Mike, if you'd like to tell everybody why you're here and what brought you here and what do you hope to get out of not just this retreat, but serve in this capacity.
Well, I was born and raised in Mckin County. I didn't live in town until 15 years ago. My daughter was born and we moved into town the month she was born. So I've lived in town as old as she is. And even working at the paper, I used to say I was born here, I was raised here, I've lived here all my life. Just I have a passion for the town and the county, its people, its culture, its heritage. And I've had a desire to, I'm 51 years old and finally it's been a desire of mine to serve in this type of capacity. Finally able, life allowed me to be able to do it. So I just want to do the best I can for the people that, our taxpayers, be good stewards of their money and do as much as we can for them while at the same time making sure we have good use of the tax dollars.
Thank you, Mike.
And as far as what we want to accomplish here today and beyond is, you can tell by looking at this, there's some big ticket items on here and so we've got some challenges ahead of us.
We certainly do, we certainly do. It's, we want to be able to, and I'll throw in a little editorial comment here. We want to be able to go through this process and identify those top priorities and then set some goals and objectives on how to achieve the things that we're planning to do. So I don't want us to come back in here next year and say, well, what did you do with that list you had last year? And say, well, it's on the shelf over there somewhere. We don't want to do it. You've seen all those quote studies that end up looking real good in the notebooks and then we put them on the shelf. We want to be able to get some action out of this. But thank you for Mike. Mike's a valuable member of the town board and we've served together for the last two years. John Henning is our attorney and John, I'll give you an opportunity to say whatever you'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to say I was born and raised here, but I was born over in Jackson County. But everybody's treating me like I'm pretty much a local anyway, so I appreciate that. But definitely raised here and I've been thrilled to be the town's attorney since 2006. So it's been quite a while now and I've seen a lot of growth in this town. This is, this kind of a meeting, I think, is the best thing you all get to do. We spend so much of the rest of our time, and I do longer by half deal with problems. Where what's going wrong, what do we have to do, what do we have to fix it, who's right, who's wrong? Where you get to sit down and really think about where are we going? What do we have, what's good, what can we develop? How do we get to a positive for the community? I think is the best thing you all get to do. So I just always really treasure the time that you all get to sit and think about what's good and what can we do to make it better.
John's been the attorney for the county, even him and his dad before him, for how many years now?
For the town.
Yeah, for the town.
I've been in town three since 2006. And I took it on straight from Bobby Key and it was about 2015 when people stopped saying, well, Bobby always said.
Do you remember that, don't they joke?
Bobby.
I, we had a retreat one time, or I think it was maybe not a retreat, but maybe an annual employee appreciation breakfast one morning. And the curator of the folks school over Cherokee County was our guest speaker. And he had a lot of interesting stories. Every time I hear somebody say, I was born and raised here and so forth, I remember the story he told us that morning. He said, there's a guy that lives over there around Hanging Dog or someplace over in Cherokee County. And he said, he asked old farmer one day, he said, how long do you have to live here before they consider you a native? He said, well, if you weren't born here, he said, you won't ever be a native. He said, he said, well, I wasn't born here and my wife wasn't born here, but he said, our kids, they was born here. I guess they'd be natives, wouldn't they? He said, well, he said, it's kind of like this. He said, you know, an old cat can have a litter of kittens in the stove, but that don't make them biscuits. So, but I appreciate those who had the opportunity to be born and lived here all their lives so far and those who decided to make Franklin their hometown. And I'm one of those, I appreciate everybody being here. Russ is doing a good job for us and I'm going to turn it over to him. You got a copy of the agenda. He may, he may not follow it exactly. He may jump from topic to topic, but those are the things we'd like to discuss today and come out of here with some concrete plans on some actions that we maybe to move forward. So Russ?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everybody. Anybody else wake up tonight thinking about this issue or that issue? Really? Before we get started, I do want to introduce Becca Scott, who is Director of Community and Economic Development for the Southwestern Commission. She deals a lot, I mentioned last night, a lot of the economic development issues we deal with are things that go across county boundaries like housing and broadband. Becca has worked primarily in broadband for the last couple of years. She does a little bit of everything, but, so if anybody has any complaints about your broadband, you can see Becca during the break this morning.
And I'll get it to your house immediately.
Yeah, she'll fix that for you. But she's going to help out this morning a little bit, just kind of listening in also. So a couple of things, and for those that weren't here last night. So we started last night with about 30 issues and the board kind of identified which ones of those were priorities and those are the ones that are on the center, easy to up here. So those are things we're going through this morning. Our goal is kind of wrap up conversation about 12:30. And then I think one, you know, we have our nine priorities and then the double secret one that snuck in was the root and barrel issue with the patio or the potential patio outlet. So we're going to do a walkabout about 12:30, look at that and then get everybody out of here at 1 o'clock. So we'll be, we'll be moving pretty quickly. We'll be trying to stay on task and try to get through all these issues. We talked last night a little bit about kind of ground rules for the day and so I just want to go back over those real quick. We ask that everybody participate fully, be here, be present. We're not going to be here that long, so we need everybody's full attention to get through this. Respect, you know, we may not agree with somebody, but we can listen to them and we can hear what they have to say. Don't take it personal. Just because somebody doesn't like your idea doesn't mean they don't like you. And consensus rule. And that is that whatever we decide as a group, we're all going to go out and be good soldiers for that. We're not going to go bad mouth the board and say, well, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't with that and that was the dumbest idea and they want to do that, but I'm not. We're all going to be on board and be a team as we come out of here. And you guys have charted a direction going forward. So one other thing, and I usually point this out when we're in here just briefly every year because it changes and I think it's helpful for perspective, and that is, we just talked a little bit about the group life cycle. I mean, you guys are a group and you're an ever-changing group. And all groups kind of go through these cycles of, you know, they go forming, which is, you know, for you, that's election telling, right? And that's when you add people and you come in and that's kind of where you are right now as a group. norming is kind of deciding how you guys work together. And those can be good norms, those can be bad norms, but that's part of your process. At some point, you know, it's not if, but when, you're going to make each other mad, you're going to rub each other wrong and you're going to get in disagreements and you're going to go through a little bit of storming, just like any relationship that any of us has. But it's part of the process. And then eventually, hopefully, we move through all that to get to the point where you're starting to kind of click as a board in your forming. And the key is, I mean, or the kicker is, we don't ever stay in any of these places and we don't necessarily follow them in order either. I mean, we can get to storming and then all of a sudden we're about to get, you know, to this performing stage and then somebody leaves the board, we go through election cycle and then we're back to forming again. We're always kind of moving through this and it's always a work in progress and that's why these days are kind of important to have. I think it got mentioned last night, why are we, why are we going through this issue? We went through it last year and I think David said, because we're a different board now than we were a year ago. You know, we have new people. So it is part of the process. So just a little bit of perspective as we go through this, that this is all process and even the frustrating parts are getting us to where we need to be eventually. So with that said, we'll start moving into some of these issues. And I've, you know, for anybody that, if we have any runners in the room, you don't necessarily take off and just sprint down the road and go for a five mile run. You want to stretch a little bit. So in the spirit of that, I don't want to start with the Quasi this morning. Because I don't want us to pull anything. So I think we're going to start, first issue, just to start with beautification. And one of the way I want to go through these is, most of these issues have a champion. Somebody that got these on the list, somebody who kind of has this in mind. So I may ask somebody to describe the issue. If there's a couple of different points of view on those issues, let's hear what the different sides of that issue are. What are we thinking about? You know, this side, that side. Stick to the facts and then give everybody a chance to talk to it needs to. But then let's get to like, what are the actions we can take? What can we direct staff to do in the next 30 days? What can be done in the next year? Are there action steps? Is there more information you need to get to where you can take action? But you know, there comes a point, and for those that have been here for a couple of years know, that we can get to the point where we start to go around the circle and talking about it and we're not getting anywhere new. So with that said, with beautification, is there somebody that wants to explain to the group kind of what that? And one other thing, I guess, that we've gone through in the past. And Mike was about to go there anyway. In the past, we found that it works best to raise hands when we want to talk. And then we're not worried about trying to get in, interject, anything like that. Is everybody okay if we kind of follow that also? And it just makes it a little easier to manage the conversation? Mike, do you want to explain?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this was the one that I had on one of my, I mean, that's one of the five things that I had submitted. But more specific in beautification, I would, at one point, the previous town manager had tried to put some money in the budget. It never, it didn't get to us in the budget. But she, they had tried to come up with a concept and some money. I want to say it was about $50,000, but whatever. We talked, money's not the issue right now, but we were talking about the roundabouts. Doing something in the roundabouts, particularly the first one, it's the gateway into town. When you're coming off the four lane and into town, right through the Womack Street circle. Doing something there that, you know, I don't know. You know, you come into a town and something catches your eye and you remember that place. Whether you stop there or not, you're like, gee, I'd like to go back there sometimes. So my thought was we try to come up with something significant in the first one and then do some kind of flower, shrubbery, something in the other, the ones that come after it. So that's my, that's what it basically boils down to.
Okay.
I think we've done a good job in beautification so far in the town. But I think that's the roundabouts, you know, they just kind of got built and they're there.
Right.
You know, at the very least, I think we need, even if we don't do something significant in the gateway one, we need to do something in all of them, something to some degree.
Okay. David, do you want to add something to that?
I just, I think that that was part of the original plan. I'm almost certain I saw plans years ago that had streetlights in at least a few of the roundabouts, but they had to be breakaway poles in case a car came across it. I don't know if DOT just didn't have it in their budget or if they were counting on us to do it. I know that was, they were behind schedule, so they rushed to get them done and didn't even put power to them like they were supposed to. But yes, I think that was the original idea, was to make them much more protected than they are and to light that one up on Womack Street at least, because it's a pretty dark circle. So yeah, I supported the original idea of decorating those, just how did we get there?
Rita?
I had beautification on my list, but it wasn't just beautification. I also had making the town just look better and that has to do with trash collection. And I noticed in last year saying that there was an idea that maybe somebody would talk to the DA about prisoners or jail people, not the workers, but the picking up trash. So one of the things that when we were doing the campaigning, that you heard was people talking about how the town looks and just like coming in and seeing it look pretty. We need, I think we need to work on landscaping all through the area. Weeds are not a good thing and trash picked up. And I did speak with Amy about it and she felt like that we probably would have to add some, add some stuff. And I also was thinking about maybe trying to involve the garden club, the Franklin Garden Club and some of the, even the ideas for the roundabouts if we don't have a contractor that we do landscaping with already.
Okay.
Thank you. As part of this discussion, there was, I can clarify, there was at one point in the budget, something for a water feature in one of the roundabouts. Unfortunately, a water feature is not a good idea from the perspective of people put soap in them. They freeze, they break, they cause water line issues. But to say that you have something inside a roundabout for decoration or beautification, that's something that you can look at. Probably need to use a landscape architect and work closely with the DOT because there are certain standards that they have, you have to have certain line of sight. We do have power to the two largest roundabouts now, so that if there is some type of decoration, seasonally, we can put there if it needs power, related to power poles. That's a little, little more difficult to deal with. It's a lot more costly, of course, because then the town still has to pay for the power that runs that lot indefinitely. So there's still some things that we can look at out there, but my recommendation overall is not a water feature. Related to flowers and the other smaller roundabouts, DOT has some really pretty wildflower plantings that they do along the sides of the road. There's no reason we couldn't find out what they planted, incorporate that in. Something that's going to grow essentially by itself, but not very much maintenance. I think part of the concern is, we have three full-time staff that are in the streets department that's responsible for the mowing, the weeding, the maintenance of the various shrubs and plants at the different buildings downtown as well. And depending on what additional items you add, it would be something where we would have to consider potentially adding more staff, which would be something we would bring back during the budget.
Stacy, you?
Yeah, three things. One, I would totally support us spending money to improve the roundabouts. The second thing, this is a small thing, but last year, Justin was really proud and showed me the boxes they had purchased to put out near the crosswalks here on Main Street. And I think we should, that seems like something that's really cost-effective and easy to do and I think we should do more of that and maybe allocate a little more money to have bigger boxes. But that sort of temporarily accomplishes our goal of having the bulbouts until we can get those, is having plantings in those areas. And then the third thing is a question, and that is, are there rules in terms of signage in those roundabouts? Because during election season and then in between election season, all the little yard signs end up concentrated in those areas and it's really, I mean, it's terrible.
Good question.
There is a, and Justin can speak to this too, there's a legal answer to that. There's a statute that passed two, two years ago now, something like that, that defines the amount of time, and I think it's 30 days before the election, you can place a road sign in right away, which I'm assuming all the inside of a roundabout is going to be right away. We're a little bit, it seems to be a little bit odd with a US Supreme Court case about sign ordinances and having reading to know how, you know, you deal with it. Seems to be governmental viewpoint discrimination. You can't, you can't know whether you can permit a sign or not, depending on what it says. And the state law on this seems to be a little bit odd with that. But the bottom line is, the way it reads is, campaign signs are permitted. Wasn't it 30 days out?
State laws, 30 days.
Yes.
We don't, we don't have any prior limitation. It just says, must be a three day after.
Yeah. And so there is some guidance, but we're supposed to be able to do that in the state law.
Let me follow up with that then. If we do, if we spend money to do decorations inside a roundabout, then there's nothing to prevent political signs in those areas?
I can remember those time periods that they're permitted within the statute. So I think some time before and after, I can't remember how much after, it's 10, maybe like 10 days after.
15, I think, state says.
Okay. Joe?
You know, this roundabout, especially Womack Street, is such an opportunity to pitch Franklin. And my thought is, first of all, I would love to see a little solar panel or something, which would allow us to use power for what lighting I think would be necessary. You know, a sign, one of those nice clay looking, I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm thinking we need to do something fairly simple, lit up in the evening hours and all, and low maintenance and hopefully with solar to use there. It's a good sign, it's a good imaging, plus it doesn't cost electricity. Rita, when I ran for mayor in '03, litter on a stick was one of my big campaign issues. And that was all these signs and stuff, but going along with the trash on the streets. Bill Ditten, was it Holland, was it Officer Holland who was trying to work with the people who do community service to? What's happening on that?
We've actually had quite a bit of success with that for a beauty service. And COVID and everything we discussed, everybody's got to remember that's a big factor that sometimes gets overlooked. Well, why this happened, why isn't that happening? But we've had a lot of success with community service and especially trying to pick up in details like that.
Well, that's where, that's where we need to go. I'm going to turn, I'm in the courthouse, back, I've always said those windows are that thick now because they've been rubbed with wind decks. For so often, people working off the 48 hours of community service, not the ones who are incarcerated in, but if, that community service ought to be mustering on Saturday or something with the organizer, with somebody with their vest and stuff and going and systematically picking up the town. We need a big map of the town, showing where we were at last month, showing where we were at this month. And I have always said that our public works people need to have some trash bags in their truck. And if they drive past a blowout, I'm not talking about just regular run of the mill trash, but if a big bag's been dropped off a car and they drive past it, don't turn a blind eye to it. Stop and pick it up. And it's just, I think, an attitude that it ain't my job. And it, you know, and so it's, we, there's no excuse for us not being much more aggressive. The big corridor is coming from Food Line into Towne District, what I see, coming down the Hollins Road. But there's pockets where it's just ugly and it's just very hard to justify, very hard to be proud when you drive past something like that.
So if you all are in consensus, I mean, this sounds like something everybody's interested in. There's no opposing view of this. So what are concrete steps that you want to see taken?
Well, one of the things, we can come up with all kinds of plans. As you all know, you can't do anything unless the DOT says that's acceptable. So I think before we make any grandiose plans on what we ought to do for them, we need to find out what guidelines the DOT is willing to, or have published or are willing to allow us to do. And like someone said, they probably don't want to put a lot of money into it, so maybe local resources that do it. We need to find out what their guidelines are and then, and then work on our plan to do that. I think everybody wants to see a good entrance into the town. I was telling Russ earlier, when I first came to Ryerson City in January of 1976 and I came across Governor's Island Bridge there at the Tuckahassee River, my first impression of that town was junk cars parked along the, stacked up beside the river to keep it from washing out. And I can still see that right now and that's been a long time ago. So your impression of the town is going to be made when they first come in. And so the roundabouts are a good, a good area to do that, but that's not the only thing. As Rita says, not just the entrance, but the rest of the town as well. And I think the trash picked up and things like that will help. But I think we need to let people know that we want a clean, safe, we want people to take pride. We want people to take pride in living in Franklin. And to do that, they need to keep it clean and presentable. And we can do what we can, but we need to convince the public somehow that they need to be partners on doing this and find out what the DOT will allow us to do.
So for concrete steps, is it reasonable to say in the next 30 days, somebody reaches out to DOT to get a feel for what is allowed in the roundabouts?
They should have some printed guidelines on what they will and will not allow and it may vary from place to place, I don't know. I haven't, I've never seen them.
Okay. So yeah, I think we'll put, reach out to DOT. Rita?
I think another concrete step would be to figure out how many hours that we could potentially get from the people that, that you were talking about, Bill, that, from the DA's office, I mean, from that connection.
Community service.
Community service. But then maybe to get with Amy and that small team that does freak stuff and ask them what else needs to be done, because that's their job. And they could maybe help inform us and maybe there's something else that they've been thinking about and seeing this mess everywhere, feeling badly about it. So I think maybe a report from them about what they can and can't do, what they see as done and not done.
Okay. Are those two things doable? Chief, is that, does that work with you?
I'll mention, I'll mention one other thing. Y'all who were on the board this past year remember, in one meeting, the mayor passed out some vests. I still got mine in the car, I never have to use it. But the vest was to put on when you go out and volunteer to help pick up trash or whatever it might be. I think it would send a real powerful message if at some point in time, the board itself could get together, put our vests on and get out there and show people how much, how serious we are about cleanup of this town. And I think that would, that would really send a message and let people know that we're serious about it and we're volunteering to do this and we want you to join in with us. What do you think about that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we'll put, if you report.
For you, we're talking about bringing, getting a report about what's being done and.
Yes. Okay, so working with the staff and then also working with the DA's office, I guess, to get a feel for how much capacity there is in terms of hours. All right, pickup day for the council, is that something we're interested in? All right, Joe?
Amy, is it, is it already in place? Is it practical or are there obstacles about what I talked about? The public works general people have the directive, if there's a blowout on aisle nine somewhere.
No, that's no problem. I mean, that's.
I mean, but do they, are they told to do it or do you know?
I honestly don't know. They've never been told to do it, but we can, from this point forward, take care of that.
I mean, do you think?
It's not too much to ask when that's part of the general job, is to work on that.
And just as point of comparison, I would say, I mean, I'm up, I've got a Husky, so I'm up walking her at 5:30 to the Towne itself every morning. And I have watched public works stop their truck in the middle of the road, so they get out, pick up a piece of trash, get back in the car. So I think it's just a frame of reference. I think that's a fair expectation. Stacy?
Can we make one of the steps to, to plan to allocate money for more of these planners on Main Street? Maybe some bigger ones?
I love those. I know a guy in October that has three giant concrete ones.
Yeah. That's called, that's called corruption.
That's the side of the road that you're going down that way.
And so knowing that, I mean, depending on what you learn from DOT, you know, there may be things you come back, kind of next step type thing, where Amy comes back, reports to the board and says, this is where we're at. Anything else in the short term?
Real, real quick, I want to ask Justin, how many adopted streets?
Streets?
Streets do we have currently? Because we do have that program where businesses and individuals can actually say, hey, I'm going to adopt this street and I'm going to keep this clean. And there's certain guidelines that they have to follow on that, so I didn't know.
I think with the two recent streets that are adopted, just first of this month, I think we're up to 16 town streets that have been adopted. Now, of course, some do better. Now, of course, some do better than others, and have to stay on them. But I think in the first two years, been about 70 bags of trash picked up between all those individuals that have streets adopted. But that's also DOT's rules, because they have their own separate program.
Okay. Rita?
Well, that was probably the good, good thing to do is, I think, in one of the papers, would maybe do something about the adopted street program and get it back out there, as well as something about the beautification efforts, the cleanup efforts. So some kind of advertisement.
Yeah, definitely. And, and the same with, if you do a day where the board's out picking up trash, certainly want that to be highlighted and have that story told. Great. Anything else?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know, I've seen the board approach in the past, and there's a lot of other businesses engaged in this, and I've seen other cities get engaged in kind of visual media, but more visual, actual art, working with your art community. Like you've seen 828 Cafe with murals. I know Mr. Guffey's talked to a group with the Appalachian Trail connectivity about doing a mural on his building. You've seen Matt from Dusty Palette do some things around town. It's a pretty simple, really, really cheap way to kind of set yourself apart, and make, you know, set a, set an environment that's very inviting to, to us. And I think you've got a pretty large art community here. It's already reached out to, I know, was it Giaquinto Sidney had reached out at one point about trying to organize that, so that'd be a pretty easy win, if we could stay on task with that.
So what would, what would help us phrase the step? What would?
Um, maybe just identify some, some opportunities that we can either, I don't know, if we want to assist businesses, or we just more want to look at what we have as a city, what our assets and properties and, you know, vacant spaces and things, we could maybe. Amy?
Are you talking actually having off the Public Art Commission that would actually send out calls for artists, or?
That's a good question.
Determining if the town wants to commission, say, a sculpture, or a painting, or something throughout town? And are you looking at it more of getting a committee together to do that, or just?
Um, I think, honestly, I think probably at least some small committee, something to keep, you know, scheduled or tasked, and doesn't just fall off the mat.
Not just have a one-off, but have a process.
The call plan actually identifies that as a good way for us to separate ourselves with public art and murals, allowing people to paint murals on their buildings, or actually encouraging people to paint murals on their buildings. And if I may, I'll take the first shot across the bow here. That's part of Rupert Barrow's plan, if they get permission to build a patio, would be to paint a mural, you know, Welcome to Franklin, or whatever it is, on the side of their building.
Shot across the barrel, stirring the pot, one of those things. Okay, good deal. Any, any other concrete steps for this?
And? Only one other thing I'd like to do, Russ, as far as following up on concrete steps, I'd like for us to revisit this in six months and see what's been done since our retreats.
Okay.
And we do a sort of a, it doesn't have to be a special meeting, we could do it as a board meeting. So what have we been able to do over the past six months to meet this objective and this goal, and trying to beautify our town? And I think it's good every once in a while to give yourself a report card and see if you're really following through with the things that you're supposed to do.
And I think all these are things you can do in the next six months.
So it'd be on the June, it'd be on the June agenda?
Yeah, whatever, June, or July, or August, whatever, but I'd say within six, six months, so.
Okay. Are we okay?
I think I have one quick follow-up.
Absolutely.
You're gonna have the budget process through this. I need to know, do you want additional funds for the beautification efforts included in the budget?
I think at this point in time, in the proposed budget, it seems like the consensus to me of the board is that we need to do something, and in order to do that, you're gonna have to earmark something in the budget toward that process, and then during budget deliberations, we can leave it in, increase it or take it out.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, yeah, we'll move on. All right. N'Quasi. Who wants to state, statement?
It would be good, maybe for us to get just a little bit of historical perspective on the N'Quasi project, for not everybody to be on the board all the time. It started several years ago. Probably the one person in here who knows as much about it is Mr. Guffey, because I think he was involved in it when it first got started. I might want to put him on the spot, but if anybody could give us a historical overview of where we are, I think it would be a good general standpoint.
Yeah. I think it was 2013, we held a series of meetings out at the Cowie School that actually involved a lot of members of this board at the time, and county staff, and folks from EBCI, some of the governmental folks, and also elders and speakers. And the idea was to, to bring people together and form some personal relationships so that people could communicate with each other about issues between the town of Franklin, Macon County, and EBCI. And if you remember, at the time, there were some major issues and some friction between the entities. And so we pulled a group together out of that process called Mountain Partners, which was a group that was between sometimes 20 people, and sometimes as many as 30, 35 people, from all different backgrounds, from town, government, county government, EBCI government, different entities of the tribe, as far flung as the EBCI hospital, all the way to local bankers over here. And so it was a government officials, it was just a wide variety of, of people who had an interest in building those relationships. And I think the, like, the core of the project was to, to repair, I would say, 200 years, 300 years of, of, to begin to try to heal, I think, the divide between the two communities. And to recognize, as one, one of our Cherokee participants said, to also recognize that, you know, we've been living together for 300 years now, and that we're all mountain people, and we should work together. And so it was, really, the core of the project was, was, was something deeper than just, just the corridor. And, and the concrete project that came out of it was this idea of a corridor that would stretch from the sacred Cherokee sites at the headwaters of the Little Tennessee, all the way through Cherokee, and that provide a place for Cherokee people to tell their story about those places, and provide a place for mountain people to tell their story. And several sites along the way, mound sites, sites associated with, with stories, Cherokee stories, some concrete sites like N'Quasi Mound, Cowie School, Potato Mound, to put it in English, in Cherokee. And so we began by making these interpretive areas. We started with Cowie Mound, done in bilingualy, in English and Cherokee, to give a chance to expose the language. If you notice, you go into Cowie, there's bilingual Welcome to Cowie signs, just a way to build those relationships. And eventually, we saw the opportunity to try to negotiate the transfer of the mound, initially from the town of Franklin to the tribe. But Chief Sneed thought it was a good idea, said, let's, why don't, why don't you work on the transfer in the Quasi Initiative? And that way, you have town folks, county folks, Main Spring, EBCI at the table to, to manage the, the care of the mound and the interpretation. So it was a good idea. And so the Quasi Initiative was formed as a nonprofit, to do the nonprofit, and sort of the administrative end of that. And Mountain Partners was convened so that everybody could, could catch up on the various aspects of the project. It was a really open and transparent project, there was a lot of momentum. I mean, it's, to me, it's still monumental that, that it was actually the transfer of the mound and that kind of cooperation between the two communities. And so that's really the background, and, and what the, what the initial purpose was, the Quasi Initiative. I was one of the founding members and served on that board until, I think, October, September, October, I left the board.
And bringing us to the issue that got it on the board for today, I don't know if that's still you, Stacy, or David?
I mean, I'll, I'll give a synopsis, if you want to. It kind of, it fell on us recently at the, at the county commissioners meeting. The N'Quasi Initiative is, is asking for support towards getting a, a grant, an economic development grant, to maybe do the Equinox Plan, acquire some properties down there in the, in the county. For whatever reason, just, I guess, felt some discomfort. And they've asked for a recommitment from the tribe, Main Spring, and us before they will support the initiative and, and fund it with $100,000. And I think the, the biggest point of contention is that maybe the impetus of the N'Quasi Initiative was that it was a partnership, or at least that's what happened when the, the town, I was there, it was a very contentious issue. And I think everybody felt really comfortable that it was, it was four entities. It was the county, the town, Main Spring, and the tribe. And we all knew that with the board makeup of those four groups, nothing too wild was gonna go on, it was, it was, you know, it was gonna be moderate, and it would go slowly. That being said, I don't think that anybody really understands the board makeup of what's going on since we did the transfer. Who's the town members, who's the county members, who's the EBCI members, and who are the Main Spring members? And kind of by default, with, with, with the county's move, they're forcing the four partners to reengage and to relook at where the Quasi Initiative is going.
Who from the town is on the board right now, anybody?
I think it's Justin.
Okay.
Justin, I'd, I'd like to say that having served on the board and served for the last few years with Justin, that, you know, if, if we discuss representation on, on the board for our part as the town, that Justin has done a great job at taking the concerns of the town to that board, trying to represent the interests of the, of the town. So if, if we talk about any sort of lack of representation, it's not because Justin hasn't been making an effort, because he sure has.
Does the county, does the county want a letter of, I mean, they want you to support, or they want monetary, like you pitch in on the match also?
I, I've had a request from Zizenbaum, Baum, for a letter of support. I think the town's supported the project along, and we actually may have set aside some money that potentially could be used toward helping that project. But I think you need to understand in dollars and cents, they applied for a $5 million project, a budget, or a grant for $5 million. And part of that required a percentage match, I'm not sure how much it was, 10% to 20%?
I think it's 20.
Yeah, they gotta get a million.
And so, in order to do that, they were looking for the participants to come up with the money. The county, as, as, as he said, was, was said, well, we'll, we'll put in $100,000 toward the local match, provided, provided that you get everybody in agreement, which means the Eastern Band, Main Spring, and the Quasi Initiative members. And so we're kind of waiting, I guess, in a way, I haven't pushed it much, but in order to write a letter of support, we need to know whether that means we're gonna support them in word, or we're gonna support them in word and in cash. And so that's something that the board will have to decide, if we're gonna put any money toward this project or not. I have not heard whether or not Eastern Band and Main Spring have, have signed any letters of commitment yet. I know that the, the real crux of the problem, after talking to the chief a little bit about it, is that there was some concern that the focus was gonna be taken away from the historical significance of the site, and, and watered down somewhat by a growth in commercial businesses in that area. And they were concerned that that might take away from the initial purpose, if they found right. Does that sound right?
That's right.
Who had the concern? The tribes?
Several members of the tribal council.
I think Main Spring.
And Main Spring, I mean, the, the partnership had the concerns.
So is that the question, like, is that the, kind of the tipping point for the town as well, of whether or not this is on mission with what you, you know, what, what is the point of contention here? And what is, what's the question we're trying to get to? And I'll go David, and then Rita.
I don't think anybody understands what the grant parameters are, what the actual focus would be if the grant was made. There's a whole lot of, a whole lot of questions. And I feel like each entity of the partnership, which is what the Quasi Initiative was formed to be, has these same questions, and is tepidly at best giving support, because nobody actually understands what's going on in the representation dynamic. There's a breakdown in communication as to, as to how representation's being fed back to the people who are partners, and there's a lot of, lot of non-communication going on, I guess.
Okay. Rita?
I know that, that N'Quasi put out some trailers and tried to get sunk, and we got input from people. But my, one of my many concerns is that I don't feel like the, the people of the town, until we had the two articles after the commissioners meeting, I don't believe that there's that much walking around knowledge about, about what the Quasi Initiative is thinking about doing. And I think that's a problem. I mean, they, there was a lot of concern when, when the deed was transferred. I mean, that was a very contentious issue. So I'm concerned about that. I think from Main Spring, you know, they, they're looking at green space and what their mission is. So, you know, that, this is a little different with the commercial ideas. But also, I was wondering, John, if you got anything back from your letter?
Yeah, and I don't know if it's been, if it's not been forwarded on, we'll, we'll get it to all the council members there. They responded pretty quickly with the current makeup of the board, including who, who the people are, what their terms are. Basically, everything we asked for was provided in a, in a pretty rapid fashion. The, and part of that that I've looked into so far, and just sort of beginning to review it, of course, I wanted to see what all the direction the council was, so I've done a lot of that. The bylaws appear to be very much the same as they were, and we did review them as part of the transfer, to understand exactly what the nature of that was. And, and the transfer itself, I mean, to, to do it right under state law, for, for starters, you had to do it with a conservation, because if you're gonna do a piece of property to a, a nonprofit to, to maintain it, it's according to historical value, you'd have to put a conservation agreement on it, so that's part of the deed. The, the original deed, the Fousd deed itself from 1946, said that any deed that, that you made it wrong, had to also put that obligation to maintain the sort of historic nature of it in, in any such transfer. So we did that. And part of doing that, we did request to, you know, we put in a requirement that the corporate nature of the initiative would always include, and, and again, in trying to find the right balance between what, you know, concerns were about who was being transferred, and what had been done with it, versus how heavy-handed would the town continue to be about it. We, we arrived at, the membership on that board director's would all at least include someone from all of these partner entities, but it didn't spell out exactly who was gonna name them, and how, how they were blamed on that board. And I don't believe that even now, the bylaws don't really spell out in the board, it was elected its own, which is not uncommon for a nonprofit, but it's not your, not your average nonprofit.
So what? Go ahead, Joe.
Looks like there's $5 million on the table, potentially. And we're gonna be asked $10,000? Is that, is that a number that I've heard?
I think it could be that, it could be nothing, just a letter of support.
I'm not a deep study on the history of this, I should be with my connection to the tribe. Rita? Rita? But there's obviously not, there's a level of discomfort in the current management of the whole operation. And that's kind of, I sense a root of where there's, there's angst. And how that gets adjusted, you know, there's been talk about a reorganization of a central committee to, to have a certain number of representatives, maybe in a different capacities, whatever. But I certainly think that we should try to find a way to make this work, because of all of the reasons of coordination and comity and working together, plus just the fact that there's potentially some hard cash that we could use to help, help the town. But there's, there's some angst going on.
So in terms of steps, or what, what is needed? I mean, you know, you don't have to provide anything if you're not comfortable with, what's, you know, is it communication? What's the...
I would feel more comfortable if the Eastern Van and the folks at the N'Kwasi or Main Spring, who'd said, "We're together on this project." And then they come to the town and said, "Look, if we're together, we've agreed, we work out differences, and we want to move forward with it, with these changes or whatever." I'm not sure anybody would be objecting to supporting something like that, because if it would benefit all the parties involved, and certainly the town would want to be part of that. So I, I guess I'm kind of waiting to see what the relationship between those other two opposing ideas are, if they can come together and resolve that. Because the thing about, the thing about the grant is the money's not going to be there forever. It may not even be available this time. But if they don't get these things worked out ahead of time, we won't even be talking about a grant, we'll be talking about doing anything with local, I say local, regional money. So I, I guess I'm, I'm hoping maybe that these other two groups can resolve whatever conflict they have. And I think that's what the county was saying, "Y'all get your act together and we'll put some money into it." And so I guess I'm saying from my perspective, from being on the town board and mayor and so forth, if these folks can get their differences worked out, I don't see any reason why we couldn't support it.
David, I'll just, a little bit of background, and I don't know if this is, you know, this grant cycle was part of ARPA funding, and then so there was a little bit of a lower match, and there was kind of a race to like, we gotta get this in. Our conversations with EDA on these grants is, that money's pretty much gone at this point. So that cycle has kind of been missed, and the next cycle is probably looking at summer or fall. So in terms of any kind of time limit or urgency that's been put on this, I'd say there may be a little bit of a breakdown.
I have a question then.
Yeah.
Why are, in, in all the, the recent public meetings, there's this two-week timeline on, and two-week timeline for us to get a letter back of support? I don't understand that.
I don't know whether, and Rita, or actually David, I probably said that.
Mine may be long, go ahead.
Well, I mean, that's, that's the other thing that's concerning, is I looked at those, you know, the grant timeline, and I thought, well, these, I look like these are, you know, and I can't even figure out for sure which grant they're going for. So I think we need to, we need to understand more. I mean, $5 million sounds good, Joe, I mean, it's $4 million plus the match. What it is that we're trying to support? I mean, that seems sort of basic to me. What is it? I mean, I've read the stuff, I've seen them out, but is that whether it's going to be in the content of the grant?
Right.
What are the requirements of the grant?
So first and foremost, sounds like there's a need for another conversation, them coming to the board to present again or something. I mean, that's, seems like that's step one at some point.
David, can I have 20 seconds of your time and just say, just say in terms of the, of, of the benefit to the town, you know, the $5 million, I think that's a problem. I don't understand exactly how this, I want to know how it would benefit the town directly.
Okay.
I, I wanted to say, first of all, the plan that Equinox did is, is pretty fabulous. I don't know if you've seen it, but it, it has the potential to really, I mean, East Franklin could be changed for the better forever. I think the tribe, to, to Jack's sake, I think the tribe has become more comfortable with the process, because they're going to be co-applicants on it. So I think that gives them a little more hands-on approach, I think that's brought their comfort level up. The, the other partners, the discomfort there, is the fact that, I think the idea was that it was a partnership, and that's what made me feel comfortable when I was sitting up there and I raised my hand to vote to transfer from the town's care to N'Kwasi Initiative's care, was that I knew it was a partnership, and I knew it would take four different entities butting heads and figuring this thing out together. And I think maybe that partnership idea is, is, has broken down somewhat. I'd like to see everybody get more comfortable with it. We can't all be co-applicants on the grant, we shouldn't all be co-applicants on the grant. But I think in order to get the town and the county and Main Spring at least to get more comfortable, I think we need to go back, we need to touch base with the original intent of what N'Kwasi Initiative was, and that was a partnership. And, you know, if there's $5 million on the table, you can't just go running towards $5 million and leave your partners feeling uncomfortable. Whether the uncomfort's legitimate or not, if your partners aren't comfortable, you know, you need to get back together and say, "Let's move forward as the partnership." I think taking steps towards reaffirming that the N'Kwasi is a partnership of four entities would, would bode well for everybody and, and ease discomfort on all sides, and then we can chase money at a later date.
Well, and I think you bring up a good point, is, I mean, the sin of grants is you don't want to just start chasing money. It's got to be in line with what you want to do.
You can't, you can't value the grant money over the partnership.
Exactly.
But at the end of the day, the partnership is what it is. I mean, that's the whole thing.
And, and I will say, if, I mean, this is in-town limits, if with EDA, I mean, if they don't have a letter of support from the town of Franklin, this is probably not going to go real far. So I, I think you, you have a right to be in that conversation. Justin, you want to add?
So being on board, so when Barbara passed, Barbara was kind of the other town Franklin board member, myself and her. So when she passed, that's when the N'Kwasi issue was looked at and solved, decided to appoint somebody that just lived in the town. And at first glance, it's kind of like, okay, live in town, it wasn't saying, you know, it's got to be somebody physically from the town. And nothing to, the individual that was appointed, she's done fine, but I think for us as the entity on that partnership aspect, I think that has lessened our voice a little bit, because the person that just lives in the town has no, like, other than myself, has no reason to, like, report to the town what's going on. They're more just an individual that just lives in the town. So I think if this is our chance, is an opportunity maybe to say, if you really want to be an opportunity, the partnership to be joined, it needs to be actually from those entities, not somebody just, somebody.
Or at least the town decides who, you know, it doesn't have to be a tribal board member even, or even, but the town has say in doing that.
You know, because I know there was, you know, they didn't want just people just given to them, and, you know, there was some of that, which I understand. But there needs to be some, I feel that it's at times that the towns, I'm, I'm the voice, and then I'm out, but, you know, I'm the only one.
So any other key pieces of information that we haven't discussed in terms, before we start talking about what potential steps are?
Someone spoke about the urgency, I think that urgency came about, from what I read, is that the presentation before the board was, "We've got to have an answer in two weeks or else we're going to lose the grant money." So what you understood, that's what I read, I wasn't there at the meeting, but...
Although we got other information on a phone call.
Yeah, so we got to, we got to get it now, we got to get this commitment right now, or else we're going to lose the grant money. But what Russ is saying is, this cycle is probably, doors closed.
We've heard, I mean, our conversation with EDA is it's oversubscribed, that money is gone, and anybody turning it in something now is probably not getting considered until the summer. Is that, Rebecca's here to correct me if I say something wrong.
I think I'd like to know what the cycle is, and if y'all could help us out on this, let us know what the funding cycle is for that particular pot of money. And so, when, when, when applications and so forth have to be in, and letters of support have to be presented. So that gives us an idea how much time we have to consider it.
And EDA is an open grant cycle, so there's not, there's really not a deadline, but it's when can it be considered again? And it's, they're not going to fund again on that till, I mean, I think they said, turn it in in the summer and then, and funding in the fall.
It's probably going to be the summer before you can actually...
Yeah. And I'm not saying anybody misled anybody, I just, they may just not have, I mean, because I think the deadline officially for that grant is listed as sometime...
It's, wait, there, Mark, this is new.
But it was first, because it was open, it was first come, first served. So even though the deadlines in February, the money, if the money's gone, the money's gone. So I think that's...
What if someone, grant, I was first come, first served, but what if somebody submits a project and EDA's kind of like, this is, has nothing to do with what our goal is? How does that weigh into, I mean, wouldn't it get automatically, somebody submits and they would get money? I would think you'd have some parameters, you know?
Right. And it is, it's competitive, it's got to meet, they have pretty strict criteria, and certainly not everybody who's applied is going to get that money. But they are, their feeling is they are so oversubscribed on it right now with viable projects that just for that, you know, and there is another pot of money in there, but it's just for that one, it's, it's gone at this point, is our understanding.
So one of the questions, you know, one of the things I'm not satisfied with is, I don't understand what the parameters of the grant would be in terms of the deliverables. I understand that it's a 20-year timeline. Is that correct?
That it's got to stay within the ownership, or it's got to stay in that purpose of whatever's funded.
Right.
So, yeah, for 20 years, whatever's funded in that project, that's what it's going to be.
Are there, are there, I mean, I, I guess my question comes from, you know, 21 years of dealing with grants. I've never seen a grant that didn't have deliverables, specific deliverables.
And there's going to be, and for the most part, it's going to need to be investment. I mean, their main things, they're going to want to see private or public investment to match that. So like, if we put $5 million, if EDA puts $5 million in this, there's, you know, and I'm making this up, I mean, this wouldn't be N'Kwasi, but, you know, there's this company, ex-company's going to put in $20 million in private investment, and they're going to want to see some form of job creation that comes out of that. Which I think with N'Kwasi probably takes a little bit of extrapolation to get there a little bit, because it's not a direct job creator. But like, a lot of times, EDA will fund water sewer to this manufacturer, this manufacturer's going to create 100 jobs, that's the deliverable. But that's what EDA typically is going to want to see, is other investment, or they're going to just want to see job creation. David?
One of my biggest questions, and maybe you can answer it, I hope so, is, let's say the whole thing does go through and we don't meet the thresholds of the grant, what happens? Who's, who holds the bag?
Well, whoever the grantee is. So who, it's going to be the tribe, it's going to be N'Kwasi, it would not be you all. EDA generally doesn't do clawbacks on, you know, if you said you were going to create 100 jobs, you created 90, they're not coming, you know, to take that back. They may not advertise that fact, but that's generally their deal.
But if you create 10 jobs, you're supposed to create 100? Did you get smacked on the wrist?
Yeah.
Okay.
Generally. Now, if, if you didn't do anything, they're coming. You know, like, so anyway. I, it sounds, I'm...
One, has anybody even seen what they are, the parameters, what they're actually proposing? I mean, I've read the report.
Like stages of what, where the money would go?
Well, but, I mean, when they talk about job creation, like, what jobs? A few there at the Van's Auto, or, and there's other places that would be job losses if you got rid of all those businesses that are there. I just, I guess it's the parameters. You know, what is it that they're proposing to do?
This one was in, this one was, this was going to be like phases. And this was just like a phase one of what we were told, how this grant was going to follow with this grant. It was pretty much land acquisitions and more planning, was pretty much the majority of it.
All right, let's, Stacy and then Joe real quick, and then let's try to get into like what our steps are.
Yeah, so here's my big concern. I mean, being a board member, you know that this is phases and you understand what they are. We're being asked for a letter of support, potentially money, and we don't understand that. That's, that's the problem that I have, is we, we have no idea what we're signing on to. I'd like some clarity on, here are the parameters of the grant, here's the, are the steps we're going to take to meet, to meet those deliverables. And, and this is what it means for you to be a supporter. And also, some clarity on, this is how you're going to be, how the taxpayers of the town are going to be represented on that board.
That tells us what is the current management structure of the N'Kwasi Foundation?
You have a, you have a board, you have a executive director, and we have a part-time employee that kind of just helps more admin clerical help for the director, and then you have two co-chairs. One is a Macon County representative, one's an EBCI representative. And then there's a secretary and a treasurer, which the secretary's position is currently vacant from the present board members, their term expired, which could be put back on. So there's actually a vacancy, and I don't know if anybody's been, I don't think we've appointed anybody for secretary, which hasn't been as big since we've got staff that's been doing more of the secretary part.
Can we go to steps?
Probably, I'll hold my thought.
Okay.
I, I, I have to ask these questions, I'm sorry. So this, these are for you, Justin, if, if you're comfortable answering them. So with that, that current structure of the board, how, how are decisions made on that board? And how is information disseminated to the board at large?
Some of the really big topics the board gets to vote on, but I feel like the majority of your day-to-day, some of even ideas to apply for grants are just done through executive directors and, and the co-chairs. And then at times, the board is getting to just learn about these other things after the fact.
Let me go real fast. I just want to say, again, I want to reiterate, I, I love the idea, the original idea and intent of the N'Kwasi Initiative, and I love the plan from Equinox. I don't want any reservations from us regarding this to be seen as, as, as anti-vision, anti-tribe, anti-any type of involvement there. I don't, I don't think there's any hesitancy to move forward if we had some understanding of what was going on. I think we all still believe and are committed to that vision of making that a cultural corridor and an asset to the town. And telling the history, I just don't want any dissent from anybody to be seen as a, a slight in any way, other than just asking questions and wanting comfort about how N'Kwasi Initiative is ran and how we can help make it function better.
So what I'm hearing is, I mean, two issues. One, it's not a lack of support, but it's a lack of blind support. I mean, it's, it's not understanding what, what are you signing on to, which is fair. And then the other one being kind of an issue around representation and how decisions are being made, and whether, you know, if it's a partnership of four, do all four have the equal seat at that table? So what are, you know, what do you guys want to see happen? What can you do to move this forward? Is it, is it asking somebody from N'Kwasi to come and present to the board specifically on what this grant would do and starting there?
There's going to be two things, I think, Russ. One of them is have somebody come and answer the questions that have been brought up here. The other is, we probably need to go in and do some kind of a letter, it's not necessarily a commitment for anything, but tell them that we are in support, perhaps, of the, of the concept. But like, like David said, we don't want them to get the impression that we're against it, but let them know that we're considering it. It's, it's, it's an important issue, and we'll continue to work with whoever we need to work with to see if this, this thing resolves. But I think not saying anything sends the impression that, well, the town's not going to go along with it.
Not a letter of support, yeah, but a letter of...
Acknowledgement.
Yes.
Something like that.
Okay.
Not a formal letter of support, because we don't know what we're supporting yet.
And that's kind of your leverage. I mean, that letter of support is...
We're open, we're open to...
Right. I think that's, I think you're right, and that's important to do with some contingencies. But I also, to David's point, that we want to make it clear that we still are, are open and in favor of a true partnership with the other partners, that, that whatever those contingencies are, that we explain those to the tribe, to Main Spring, and to Macon County directly, so that they understand... Macon County directly, so that they understand, this is not Franklin withdrawing from a partnership, this is Franklin having some serious questions about how does this thing work, how are we representing?
So how is that letter, who's writing that letter? Is, is staff drafting that letter and then running it through you all?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have a draft and have it reviewed by the board before we send it off, to see if any changes or additions or deletions or any corrections could be made before we put any kind of a letter or stamp of approval on it. I like about input from the board members themselves before we actually send it.
Okay. Amy?
Just a clarification, am I drafting it, is John drafting it, are you guys sending me potential language?
I'd like to see it, I, I hate to shove stuff off, because I'd like to see our manager and our attorney draft up something, because I think you all understand what's going on here, and then let us take a look at it, if I need to make any changes to it, or the board needs to make any changes to it, we can do that, but we probably need to go ahead and do that pretty soon.
And then inviting somebody from the Quasi to a board meeting to answer some of these questions and concerns is another, so, letter of, kind of a, a letter of.
Acknowledgement.
Acknowledgement and concern, and then inviting somebody from the Quasi to speak to the board.
I'd like to go ahead and ask for the, for the, the board, that board to consider changing their board makeup to reflect, to reflect the idea that was presented to us. That was a, another thing that was rushed, actually, the, when we voted on the mound, the, the language in the transfer and in their articles incorporation, or whatever their board makeup was, was, was really rushed, I mean, we didn't even get it until I think we sat down at that meeting, we all agreed this was a good idea, but that's all nuts and bolts of it. Maybe didn't come out as the intent was. Like I said, the intent was a partnership. I, I Googled this thing a couple days ago, and for three hours read on the internet, and every single thing, either published by the Quasi or put in any type of publication, talks about it being a partnership, and I really want to get back to that, I really want to get back to the 2, 2, 2, and 2 board membership, and I'd like to go ahead and ask them to, to consider that. I think that would get everybody so much more comfortable with the whole, with the whole thing.
So is the initial step with that, including that in that letter, that this is, representation is a major concern of ours?
I mean, I think that's the crux of the issue.
And you start there and then, can we include that in the letter?
Don't you think, don't you think that that, that particular issue could be brought up when they do a presentation to the full board?
And let me just suggest you can do both. You can say, you know, we're taking this matter under advisement, we look forward to your coming to our meeting and explaining to us more fully where things stand in terms of our process, and, just so we give you a heads up, we're, it's sort of the consensus in the council, we're not totally comfortable with the amount of representation that we have, and we might ask you to consider a change along these lines, we'd like to discuss it with you at our meeting.
I don't think I'm the only person that thought that was what it was, that it was 2, 2, 2, and 2.
And I think it's interesting that you don't have say in who your representative might be. I mean, that's, that's not your representative. I don't know how else to say that.
I know wording can get, but do we ask or do we tell?
I think we, we kind of tell.
If we ask, who do we ask? And do they have a right to say, no? I mean, I'm, this is so nebulous to me, as to where the actual control of this great, great initiative, but the town, it's, it's in our town, and we're being asked to support it, so we, we, you know, we can, we can politely ask, but we, we may really want to insist, but be the better word.
John, John, real quick, John.
I do think you've got, if you're being asked to re, you know, verify your support, you do have the, you know, and you are committed to be at least a, a one-quarter partner in this, to, to put some, and it's a condition of your further participation, and I think, I think that's the kind of, I don't mean to say we may ask you to do this, and it might be on, you know, guilt-edged paper and be very polite and handy, I mean, we're going to say, we really don't mean that we're going to ask you to consider these changes as a condition of our.
I agree with that. Rita?
Well, I just was thinking that, as a follow-up to what we've already asked them, that this is a nice dovetail with the letter and what you've gotten back, and it was, I mean, very clearly understood, and my understanding is that the only person in the grant, I mean, in their guidelines now that does get to name anybody is the town, that there's no Quasi, that, that Main Spring doesn't, the county doesn't, maybe I'm wrong about that.
All the appointments are required to have membership on the board.
But nobody's the point, okay.
I think there is a statement in there, in the deed, that says it must be equal, though.
Not with the deed.
We just, we need to just.
So that would be another action step, too, is just revisiting.
The deed.
The deed.
In their, in their defense, I think the Quasi Initiative Board recognizes that they're maybe getting their arms pulled off in different directions here, so I think, although it may not be welcome, that, hey, we want you to change this, I think in the long run, it might make that board a lot more comfortable to actually understand what the parameters are going forward and how to operate within those parameters.
Well, and some of the issues they're getting at the 11th hour right now are going to be cleaned up if there's better representation along the way, I, I think, so I think it's worthwhile. Anything else in terms of, you know, we're not going to solve it today, and we know that's not necessarily, but do we have steps to move forward that would get to a better level of comfort?
I think that's the crux of it.
Okay. Everybody okay with us moving on from this, for today?
Do we put as a bullet point the 2, 2, 2, 2?
We do, um, let's see, representate.
Equal representation.
Equal representation could be in the letter of acknowledgement, I guess, it's kind of a bullet of that.
I like the numbers, so, 2, 2, 2.
Well, it's good to spell it out now, we're all going to be sitting here four days going, did we say?
And let me just, one final caption to that, is that one of the things that's a little hard to nail down, dealing with a nonprofit, it's got its own articles incorporation, it's not the town, it's, you know, it's a whole other entity in and of itself, and it has its own bylaws, and I think we discussed, and we didn't end up ultimately putting in agreement, but we kicked around the idea that any bylaw changes that the initiative was going to make would have to come and get approved first, and that's, so, I think, I don't know how you can do that and not say, hey, and this will be in your bylaws as our expectation moving forward, any, any changes in that are going to come to us approved first. I'll see, anyway, not to have that be part of it.
Do we need to acknowledge in the letter in any way that we understand that this is a rolling grant, where we, you know, something, I mean, I don't want them thinking that we've just obliterated their chances of this two-week timeline.
Well, I don't think when that statement was made that they had two weeks, that they actually did have two weeks. I think by that time, when they made the presentation to go to committee in the county, that the door is already closed as far as this cycle goes.
And frankly, I would say respectfully to them or anybody who's coming to you, we've got to have this answered tomorrow, you're not going to be able to necessarily jump in and do it, I mean, especially when you've got this many questions about.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I think if you have, just to say, I mean, I, as Amy and John, they're drafting that letter, I think you could shoot other, like, content ideas, or, you know, things like that to them. In the interest of time, I'm going to propose we take a five-minute break, just, we've been sitting for a while, so let's stretch legs, be back here, just after 10:20, about 10:22, and then we'll get on with the next issue. While everybody's coming back, I'm going to add one more caveat to the last conversation, without opening that can of worms back up, but, like I said, Becca's here to correct me, make sure I don't say something stupid. So, with EDA, there is a pot of money that is for, for tribal entities, and that pot of money probably is not empty at this point in time, so if the tribe is now coming in as a co-applicant, they may still be in play for that. To me, it doesn't change the basic fact that you don't support something you don't understand, and nobody holds a gun to your head with a deadline, but just to say that, you know, when we say it's oversubscribed, we're talking about the normal cycles, then the tribal cycle may be a little different. So, that's all, that's all I want to say there, just to clarify that. All right, ABC contract, and I think I'm going to let Amy kind of just start us off with what that is and where that is, and then we can, we can go from there.
So, ABC contract was brought up by two council members as we're going to discuss at this retreat. What you have later with you is the actual statutes for local ABC boards, and part of the concerns that have been brought up is that, number one, we, we don't know what the ABC board's budget is, we don't know exactly how they're figuring the percentage that they need to send to us, if they're doing what they should be doing under the statutes. So, essentially, to move this along, it would be a good thing for us to have a joint meeting with the ABC board, to make sure that they understand, number one, what their responsibilities are as a local ABC board, and how that all joins together with us, because it's important from our budget perspective to understand what their budget is, because that's a revenue source for us. So, I think it's something that would be an easy one for, is just to schedule a joint meeting between us and the ABC board, and make sure everybody's on the same page, so that we can move forward as we're planning our budget, as they're planning their budgets, so that we all are on the same page. Do you have any other?
I just want to underline, schedule a joint meeting, and if it gets pushed back to reschedule it, and if it gets pushed back to reschedule it, because we've had almost this identical conversation before, and we've scheduled a joint meeting with the ABC board, and in four years, it's never happened.
Okay, so that's definitely one step. Any other comments or other things, Stacey?
Yeah, have, have, has this board ever seen their budget?
Not that I have a record of, and there's not been a presentation to the council as far as an annual report, which is typically what local ABC boards do for the municipality. They, of course, have to provide their information to the state, but they haven't come and provided it to us.
Is that a matter of public record, then, if it's provided to the state?
It is.
One follow-up, is it, is it standard with other municipalities that, that the, the payment to the municipality is the same year after year?
It's usually based on the percentage of sales, and, and sometimes it can be pretty, you know, on the same level, but there are times where there are spikes, and then there are certain agreements, for example, if the ABC board wanted to build its own facility, then typically the municipality has to approve a reduction in the amount that they pay so that they can offset their debt service, that building built. Of course, right now, they're, they're paying lease payments, and they don't own their building. So, those are things that we would need to talk about in a joint meeting, if, if that's their ultimate goal, to do a standalone building, then we would need to be able to discuss those revenues and how we would offer those.
Right. Are there, are there payments to Franklin, are they, do they, do they spike and fluctuate, or are they typically the same?
We receive quarterly payments from them a year, and they're the exact same dollar.
Every year?
Every year.
And do they, do we know what it's based on?
It's, I'm looking at the website right now, it's based on their profit distributions. They're regulated by the state to distribute those a certain amount, and the only one that fluctuates for us is the 5% that we receive per law enforcement. It varies slightly each year, it's a small number though, in comparison.
Joe?
We've had the ABC stores since the mid-'90s, so it's not an infant industry analysis for trying to grow to get to a point. We've historically received $70,000 a year. You can go online and look at all of the ABC stores in the, in the state, and it has different criteria showing level of sales and then profit margins. Jackson County's the closest place to look, and the equivalent sales is pretty close between the two, and the bottom line is Jackson County, or the town of Silva, gets real close to a half a million dollars a year from their ABC store, and we get about $70,000. And obviously, they own their building, have owned it, they made a decision early on to invest in a modest building, and, I mean, there's only, there's not many moving parts in the ABC store game, it's, you've got to pay to have a place to sell it, and then you've got to pay people to work there. But, the town, it's the lowest hanging fruit that I see on the vine. Not only are we that much behind our neighbor, we are historically bottom three in the state as far as the percentage of that profit on the amount of, of volume, which is over $3 billion now, I believe. All these numbers are, are out there, but the town has just never made it the emphasis to make money off of it rather than providing a service. There's always been this opinion that it's a service, or it's looking for us to pay the town bills, it's a service, and I think the town needs to be a little more aggressive in finding out how we can help the ABC board to work together, because there's several hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't happen overnight, we'd have to get, find some way to get a, a building where we eventually wouldn't have to pay the monthly, nothing that's happened overnight, but it's got to start some, it needs to start something.
Mary?
These are the state statutes governing the operation of ABC stores. I guess my question is, do we have a separate agreement that the town passed when they established the ABC store, the ABC system here, and if so, did it, because, because you have some latitude within these state statutes on how much you pay the board members, on what kind of, how you determine the profits and so forth. Do we have any separate document that outlines any of those issues from the town's perspective? Don't know many. It's almost impossible, it is impossible for me to believe, that if your, if your, if your profits are based on a percentage of sales, it's never going to be exactly the same every year. It can't. So, I think since the town is responsible in some ways for creating and appointing the members of the board, we have to have some accountability to the citizens on where the money's coming from, what is being spent for, and the way to do that is to make sure that they do, they do the budget by, by state statutes, and that we're copied on that, they have to have a public hearing just like we do, and we know about that, and they have to produce, or should produce, on a regular basis some financial reports to let us know how they're operating, because if you're ever going to get them another place or whatever, you need to know what their financial situation is, and it's not going to be $70,000 a year, it's going to be something different than that, maybe more, maybe less, I don't know, but we don't know if we don't get the information. So, I think we need to have a sit-down with them, between the town board and the ABC board, to air some of these issues that we have brought up, to say, what can we do to resolve these things, and knowing that the town board has the authority to appoint, we have three board members, three, and I guess they serve staggered terms, but.
Good work.
But, no pun intended, but, but anyway, they, we have to, they have to depend on us as we depend on them, and as, as Joe says, it's not just a service, I mean, if it was just a service, it'd be like recreation, where you don't expect to make any money off of it, but if you're selling a product and taking that money and using it toward various things in the community, the way these things are sold in the first place is this is going to bring in money that's going to benefit education, or children, or recreation, or whatever it might be, and we need to, we need to have accurate figures in order to do that, they need to make timely reports, and not just once a year.
So it sounds like we have a consensus that step, just schedule, schedule a joint meeting and start this conversation, is that, is there some?
And not let it drop to actually hold them.
Right. Rita and then Chief.
Hold, I mean, do they have a, a staff, other than the people that sell the liquor? They, do they have an executive, I mean, a director, or?
They have, they have a quality finance person, I think, that keeps up with that.
And then didn't we just appoint board members?
There's three members on the ABC board, and typically, as their appointments come up, they get submitted, and you sometimes don't even make the regular consent agenda, I mean, it usually is on the consent agenda, it's just never been really an emphasis to replace anybody unless there's a death or, or some reason to do it, and the manager has been the same manager since the store opened.
Chief.
Okay.
Chief.
Well, Chief.
Well, Chief, I'm going to go down a rabbit hole, but I'm going back from the early '90s, Joe, when ABC Board or store actually was reopened up and you and John may have the most history on this, but when I was here then, they funded an ABC officer from head to toe and that's where that came from. And I'm just curious, what happened to that over the years? Where did they go? You know, benefits, equipment, the whole shooting match came from that revenue source and it just disappeared.
I'm not going to be able to add on that.
And that may be part of that conversation, right, when we have that joint meeting. David?
I think that number five boards and commissions, I think that's kind of what Joe's talking about. I think that's kind of what we're talking about with, like you said, appointments. We don't have a board representative to go to that board, but I think that's what number five we're going to talk about.
Okay. And are we, this seems fairly straightforward. Stacy?
Would it be okay to add to that, to explore our options like Jack talked about of having our own local agreement with the ABC Board or local regulations, whatever you want to call it?
Specific to Franklin?
Yeah.
Is it, can you do that?
I don't think you can.
I think you need to do that because it gives you a lot of latitude in these state statutes and you decide which way you're going to go as far as the money goes and percentages and so forth. That should be in our, some documents that we can rely on because it even goes into how much you're supposed to pay or can pay and it's not the same in every town.
So maybe the step is to determine whether that's even something you can do at the local level. Is that...
Yeah.
I'd like to say it again.
Excuse me, just looking at their distribution of funds from their website, it says that 7% will for alcohol education, their program, Macon County Police Department receives 5%, which we do, and then it says the remaining 88% net profit will be distributed to the town of Franklin. But we have received exactly $70,000 of that since 2010. That has not changed.
Per year?
Per year, two penny.
Twelve years or, I guess, 11 years.
Is there, there's another fee in there, 5 cents per bottle or whatever that has to go toward alcohol rehabilitation? That goes to the county? I don't think that comes to us, does it?
They've got some different breakdowns here. I'm not sure what goes to the county.
Local agreement.
Says the Macon County Board of Education and Macon County there share 7%. So I don't know how that breakdown is.
I think part of the statutes that's passed by the state was that additional 5 cents per bottle of alcohol has to go toward mental health issues associated with alcohol abuse in some form or other. I need to find out about how that's...
They do show an allegation to local government slash alcohol rehab, but it doesn't say what that specifically goes for.
Some people give that direct to their mental health agencies, some of them give it to the county or the town or whoever is responsible for providing those services.
So we've got, schedule a joint meeting, which I think is the key step, and then just investigating whether or not a local agreement is something the state allows for you to do. Are we okay segueing from this at this point in time and what?
What's the timeframe on the joint meeting? I mean, it sounds like that that could be, I mean...
Well, the timeframe may be...
Two months?
Well, maybe, when are you going to, I mean, you may reach out in the next week to say, we'd like to have this. After that, it's kind of...
Pinning everybody down.
Yeah.
Let's have bring samples too.
I think it needs to be before we start putting together our budget for the year because that may have an effect on it.
I mean, I think you invite them immediately and see what you can pin down, right?
It sounds like the inviting part is something we got down pat, but the coming and doing it.
I think we should schedule it soon to drop off when budget season comes and everything gets lost in the shuffle.
Okay. All right. We'll come back to ABC regulations. We're going to do that next, just stay on the ABC topic, but let's do, it seems like the natural segue here maybe is to do the boards and commissions while we're on that topic. So Amy, I think you've got kind of an update of where we are with that.
That was also a topic that was of importance to you as a council. Multiple dots were put on that. Part of the concern is there's not a formal process in place for individuals who are interested in serving on different boards and commissions to apply to the town for appointment. That's an easy enough process to implement. You have a sheet that everybody uses to sign up to be a member, to be considered. They check which board or commission, they provide their information that they need to, their name, address, phone number, email, then any experience they might have had, any rationale for why they want to participate on a board or a commission. Those would then come to you, since you are the council who is appointing, and you would essentially vote on who you wanted to appoint to the various boards. None of your boards and commissions have term limits, which means you have a lot of self-perpetuating boards. Since I've been here, you've not appointed anybody to any board or commission in almost five months now. Sometimes it just depends on when things happen, but that's highly irregular. So being able to create a boards and commissions application process and appointment process that you can share with the citizens so that they understand how people are appointed, what the terms are, what the term limits are, what the expectations are. In my previous experience, I've done a boards and commissions manual, which actually outlines, these are the different boards and commissions, these are the state statutes that have to adhere to for this. These are the resolutions from the council where this board or commission was created because you can have subcommittees and things like that, but to create an actual board or commission has to be done by resolution of the town council. If you're doing the appointments, we need an appointment calendar. It's usually easier for you as a council to say, we're going to appoint once a year, which means if you've got a three-year term, you only have to go through this once every three years, but if you do it in June so that you have a July 1 start, you guys only have to look at applications once a year unless there happens to be a death or a vacancy or something like that. So it hasn't been the practice in the past here. It's something for you to consider. It would take a lot off of your plates as far as knowing who's on your boards and commissions, number one, who you appointed, when reappointments are due, or just finding out somebody's just said, yeah, I'll serve again and they just, like I said, the perpetual serving on a board sometimes leads to a lot of lackluster performance or being content with mediocrity and not a lot of progression. And part of what was told to me as I came into this job is you want to progress, you want to take care of things, you're tired of just being stagnant. So that's something we throw out there.
David?
I'll add that self-perpetuating boards, automatic reappointments disallows people who want to get involved from getting involved. I mean, we need more people to get involved. Traditionally, the argument has been that we don't have enough people that want to serve.
Slow on.
But part of that is because nobody knows that they can serve. I mean, you know, we don't know what seats are open. There are people that want to get involved and if we had a better system, I think we would get more people involved. The second head of this two-headed dragon is that along with that, we could avoid contentious issues, ABC, and if we had a liaison from our council go to these board meetings, I'm friends with some planning board members and they're consistently shocked that they don't know what we're doing and we don't know what they're doing and there's not really any cross-pollination of ideas between us and them, there's obviously not between our ABC Board. The TDA, I think you're our representative on that. I don't think it'd be a bad idea for a board member to be appointed to sit on that as well just to keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on with our boards and committees.
Okay. Rita, do you have comment?
You know what, I find a list of the boards and commissions or committees that we appoint people to.
Town clerk should have that list.
Yeah, town clerk should. I'm sure I do. I can make that.
It gives us about 30 days.
In Travis's defense, there may not be a comprehensive list. Again, that's the self-perpetuation of these boards. They aren't updating you as a council, therefore they're not updating Travis's.
Is that an action item?
Yeah. I think that we do need some formal system of appointment, which we don't have. It's basically, who you want on your board this time? Oh, let's put Joe on there, he's been doing a good job. Okay, let's put him on there. We don't have any formal system of doing it and I think David's brought this up on several occasions, that it would be better and I think it would be as well because I've worked where we had appointment system so that people, it's not a complicated thing, just even if you're on the board, you may be the best person to continue serving, but we need some kind of a documentation that says, I'm willing to serve if appointed by the board for another term, whatever it might be. There's nothing wrong with that. The other thing that I think we need to think about is doing these things in such a way that they don't all just pop up here and there. We don't have a schedule on when these things are appointed, so we need to know that. But the other thing I think is important as that is to have some way to let the public know that seats are available on X, Y, Z, planning board or whatever it might be. And if you're interested in serving your town in this capacity, contact the clerk's office for an application. Applications for this will be accepted during the month of whatever it might be so that everybody has an opportunity and it's on our website, if they're interested in serving in the town, they have an outlet, a portal to get them into system. They may or may not get appointed, but at least they'll know when it's available and how long the appointment is for and if they want to know the responsibilities before they apply to that, I'm sure we have those on record somewhere.
So I think Amy's application, policy, timeline, you know, kind of covers, we cover those issues. So is that one of our action items, kind of get that policy and that application in place? It would take, then you would have something to communicate, you would have your timeline, all those things. So is everybody okay with that?
The manual that you talked about, that's what I'd like to see, yeah, so that we know, we also know the resolutions that created the board and what the guidelines are.
Okay. Justin?
I just want, our planning board, Board of Adjustment, all the members are listed on the planning department webpage on the website with their terms expired.
Okay.
You said the planning board and what was the other one?
Board of Adjustments, same. They serve both roles.
Don't put your fingers in Justin, he's got his.
David?
I obviously want to go to more meetings. What would the process look like for us to have liaisons to boards? Is it a good idea, is it a bad idea?
Would they be appointees? I mean, you're saying like when you go to appoint somebody, then the town board member may be that person or you're just going and sitting in?
The boards exist as they are in the manual that's going to be put out, but I think it would behoove us to send a council member to these meetings once a month.
I think any council member can go to any meeting that they have, whether you're appointed to serve on that or not. They shouldn't be open to the public, are they not? And they should be able to attend those if anybody wants to. You don't have to, he's necessarily designated to do that, but if it's an interest to you, I think it'd be worthwhile to sit in and just see what's going on. I personally have never been to one, but I think I'd like to see and sit in one time and find out how those operate.
So I think, I mean, you, you know, you appoint people to represent the town to take some of that burden off the council with knowing that these are public meetings and you can always go to them. Now ultimately, that's your decision. Joe Jewett?
Yeah, I mean fundamentally, before we went to the member-manager form, the board, council members, all of them, we had appointments to boards, the fire, the police, the, different things and it was generally two people of the six council members and it was responsibilities among the group to, for those different boards. We got away from that and I'll bring in some of the ones who've been here. After we went to a manager and after just different leaderships, it became a push to not have any appointments of the six council members to committees such as the fire, the police or whatever. I guess under the thought that that's what we had the manager for and under a general thought that anybody can go to any meeting, but am I hearing, I mean, do we want to revisit? I don't think there is, I think it's optional among the board. You know, I think we can do what we want to as a board, whether we want to actually have the mayor appoint people to different committees or not, but we used to do it and we got away from it and I'm not sure getting away from it was the best idea, but it seemed like that's where we're at right now.
John?
There are just a couple of legal reasons, there's no reason you can't have committees. The council can make whatever committee it wants to of any of your membership and I could never, there were certain folks I could never get that understood with. I wasn't saying, don't have committees. If you want to have committees, absolutely have them. There are a couple of guidelines about what they can do that you need to keep in mind and that one thing that was, is drastically different under the manager form is that in the past, those committees, like you said, Joe, those committee members were the ones responsible for, who should we be hiring here? What should this department be doing? And those things legally are transferred to your manager and she's got to keep that authority. So if you have that committee, it cannot overstep her authority and start to say, here's who I think can be employed there. But I think having general knowledge of what your departments are doing is a grand thing, you know, and I think that is a good idea. The other thing that is a potential complication, if you have a committee, is that it's required, it's a public body unto itself because any appointed committee of a public body is also a public body. And if you're going to have the fire committee meeting, it's got to be advertised and keep in some all of the shebang of being a public body under the OPE's law. And that's why I was always advocating for a liaison that goes to this one member who's just, the general understanding of the council is they're going to be the one who kind of runs shotgun on what the council understands about what the departments are doing. I think it's easier on those terms. There are folks like Afra Bluestein would tell you, the school of government would tell you that even that one liaison, you've got to treat them like a public, you know, body and advertise meetings with the rest of that committee and everything just to be completely safe. I don't think it's legally required. So those are just sort of some legal ground rules around having committees. Again, not saying don't have them, just be aware of some constraints around them.
Rita?
And I would like to see what the committees or the boards are and then maybe in July or August or sometime after the budget, look at those and then have appointments because I don't think it's constructive to people to have people go in and out. I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to work with that committee or be responsible to that board to bring information back and forth, ladies and gentlemen ain't going to get it, I don't think. So I'd like to have a timeline, timetable that we actually look at that again, have a discussion and then decide if we're going to make appointments or not.
Okay.
Well, just to be clear on that, I looked at that before I came in and talked to the former mayor about appointments. The mayor's responsibility is to appoint people to these different liaisons and so forth. We had that discussion last year whenever. And I did talk to the former mayor and said, have you got a list of all of these appointments or people that serve as liaisons? And it's kind of been sort of up in the air. I never did really get a written list on who serves on what and what their responsibility. I don't think there was one. I think that there are areas that it would be very beneficial to have a board member sit in, especially on boards, commissions and other organizations that have a sort of a governing system there. But to have somebody be the board member for streets and sidewalks, I'm not sure if you've got a good public works director and a good manager, why do you have to have somebody doing that? So I think we need to look at all these and what I would like to propose to do, if a board member has an interest in a specific area of town government, whether it's planning or economic development or infrastructure or whatever it might be, if you all could let me know what your interest in those various areas are that you'd like to spend a little extra of your time being a conduit perhaps, not telling them what to do, but bringing information back and forth. If you will let me know what interests you have in that, we can see which ones y'all want to go ahead and for us to go ahead and have a representative on. And I'd like to do that sometime within the next 30 days if we could.
All right, let's come over here from Mike and then let's see if there's any other concrete, we'll go to Amy and then any other concrete steps we need to add to this right now. I've got...
Quick question, it's for John. John, the EDC appointment, does that require...
John, the EDC appointment, does that require it, or is it because Barbara was there, then I was appointed? Do they have a requirement, they have, they need to have somebody, somebody from the town owner in their bylaws, or?
I think it is an appointment, if I remember right, it is an appointment that's supposed to be.
The mayor, yeah.
I, I think your policy is always, as a, as a town board, has always been that outside appointments are done by, to a, to another entity. So your internal boards and what have you, appointment can be made by the mayor, but outside appointments to another body remain by vote of the council.
Okay.
Amy?
Hey, do you have more?
I just got a comment. I mean, we've had this conversation four years in a row now, and we say in jest that eighty-eight percent equals seventy thousand dollars every year, and we laugh about it, but I mean, at the end of the day, we should be appalled, because we've known about this for at least four years, I've known about it, and we keep talking about it, and we never do anything about it. We keep talking about a liaison, we keep talking about a meeting. At the end of the day, it's our responsibility, it's our board, it's our town. We need these boards to function properly. I think a liaison would help.
Just to echo what David said, we need a policy, and if you don't have a policy, it's just flying by the seat of your pants, and so I hope one of our, our actual goals is to create and adopt a board commission appointment policy for the town that we can follow on all future.
Hey, a poll was, sorry, mayor. Rita?
No, I was just gonna say, under that policy application manual, et cetera, there's a discussion about whether council members will be appointed, kind of funny.
And I just want to make it clear to you, it's not like we have that many boards and commissions. We have four. So we only have four official boards and commissions that would require a liaison. So that's your planning board, Board of Adjustment, which they serve the same function, so if you've got one person, they can serve both. The TDA, and then the ABC. So those are the ones you appoint to.
We used to have the fire, the police, and the...
But I think those are your departments, right?
Yeah, we still kind of have a liaison for that.
And that's, all right, so for concrete steps right now on this, we've got to create a list of boards and commissions, kind of a policy application manual, with, as part of that kind of a discussion of whether or not to add council members to some of those, those boards. Have council members communicate your interest in a particular area, if there's something you want to be more involved with, and let the mayor kind of know that. Anything else for concrete, concrete steps on this? Rita?
It's not really a step, but if we've only got four, why, why we have create a list of them? I mean, if we've only got four, ain't that a list?
I think there are four, four formal things there, but if you have an interest in any of these other issues that the town's involved in, we'll find out some way to help you concentrate your efforts on, on, on knowing more about that. For example, when we set the board meeting, and somebody comes up and says, well, I got a concern about the zoning or change or whatever it is, and, and our representatives that works with the planning board can say, well, I was at the meeting, this is what they said and so forth, and, and I know the background of it, so it's, it's good coming from another board member to get you that perspective. So, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the planning board, anything that you have an interest in, whether they have a formal board meeting or not, it might be something that you have an interest in pursuing, because you think that there needs to be some improvements or changes or amendments to what we're doing, and if you can communicate those back to the board, then we, the board has some guideline to go by to address those, because you have educated yourself on those particular issues, and you speak from a perspective of an elected official, instead of just somebody who's serving on the board.
Yeah, I think the list piece is going to end up really rolling into that policy application, that, that whole thing will kind of include that.
And members and dates they roll off.
Yes, yes, exactly. Who's on it, what are their terms look like? It, it's, it sounds like a one, one stop shop kind of for everything with that. All right, are we okay moving on from boards and commissions? All right, so I'll go to ABC regulations. Justin, I'm gonna let you kind of describe maybe what's going on with that. I think it's maybe a planning board issue. You're making faces, I'm sorry.
But we're gonna make sure I understand the topic. ABC regulations are not just talking about the ABC board, we're talking about businesses and so forth that want the opportunity to sell alcohol within our jurisdiction, and what those, what those requirements and parameters are if they're allowed under our ordinance to be able to do this. So we're not talking about the store, we're talking about others out there who want to get involved in the sale of alcohol.
And I think, so Justin, if you'll explain, I mean, yeah, kind of give some of the background, what the issue is, and how it kind of ended up on the list.
This was, I believe this is going back to the issue that was brought to the council a year, year and a half ago, of, there was a business that was wishing to kind of urge the council to, I guess, do a, have a special election to expand the, how we sell alcohol by glass or drink inside the city limits. Currently, the only, the way our law reads how it was voted back in two thousand and six is alcohol sales are only permitted in hotels, motels, restaurants, and private clubs. Only, the only is the big part. So that means those are the only types of businesses that we allow in. Well, then, ABC regulations of the state, they have a wide variety of definitions. So when you say restaurant, hotels, motel, private clubs, those are pretty standard, those are pretty locked in, ain't much difference on those. But restaurants, the state defines a restaurant as a facility that has thirty-six seats or more.
Indoor.
Indoor. So then we have a lot, we have some restaurants that we, we go to and say it's a restaurant that has twenty-eight seats or twenty-four seats, it's small, and then to us, we're like, that's fine to sell alcohol, but to the state's definition, they're not a restaurant. They are a food business or eating establishment, whatever the definition they come in with, they've changed it every couple of years, seems like. So that they can't sell alcohol, whichever. So whenever these people apply to these businesses or come and open up a restaurant, I have to really kind of think and be like, I mean, seats are you gonna have, I don't want you to get into something down the road if you think this, and, um, so that's kind of where that comes from. We really only have one business that's really kind of pushed the issue, um, and they came, I know they came to the council, it was possibly the previous council, um, and I kind of urged them, I said, well, it would probably do you if you would get some other, find some other business that maybe would come with you, so it's just not you. And I think the council's kind of stood the same thing, and so that's kind of where we're at with that. The social districts, that's a new thing, I don't know much about it, that's a new law, um, I think John maybe has heard of that. Yeah, I can speak to it a little bit, and it was a, a twenty-twenty-one addition to the ABC laws that allows, creates this, what's called a, a social district where you can permit open containers essentially within the district. There's a whole lot of constraints you have to put on it, but I mean, I'm talking about outdoor on the street, sidewalk, you can, if you have labeled this area appropriately, and, um, it's only for special events, and it's not like it turns into, you know, Bourbon Street, you know, you don't, you don't have, it's not wide open, but somebody could say, we're hosting a special event, it's gonna be this night, uh, and, and you can allow it under those terms, if you've adopted this ordinance, to happen in a given area where your social zone district is, where somebody can, and if you do that, you're gonna make them responsible for checking IDs and handing out bracelets and whatever else that ALE I think probably very heavily then weighs in on how they actually go about conducting. The limits of the area the alcohol will be are in that zone, that you could go from place to place, you could, you know, if you, for instance, if you had an art festival in every store that had some art, and they were gonna let people come in and see it, they can individually prevent alcoholic beverages to come in, so they get served somewhere on the street, walk down the street, and go in from store to store, and they're permitted to do that if you adopt this kind of work. That's, that's a little more in short. And one more quick note, there's a six, I think, four levels of alcohol sales, there's either like, none at all, I think there's one where it's kind of a little, like, almost like the brown bag law. Then to the level we are at, where it's the hotel, motel, restaurants, and private clubs, and then there's just wide open, that's the next level. So if we were to look at council side, you wanted to have a vote by the citizens to have more, it's, it's the next level, which would allow alcohol sales at the food establishments or, or food businesses, um, but it also includes culinary schools, which we don't have any, and convenience stores, that's the other big one, which you would, would be allowing as well. You can't just say, we only want to have food businesses, here would be getting, the convenience stores could sell it, you know, you know, by glass or whatever. Let me just add to that, because I know this has come up several times, and we have looked into it, and I, I agree with Justin, that we're kind of at the, at a lower tier of where on premise mixed beverage is permitted in, in that state scheme, you could take that next step that allows it in a much broader, and like Justin says, basically, at that point, they, the state always consults, ABC commission consults with what your local regulations say about where, what zoning permits a certain given use, but they're not bound by it. They supersede, when they decide where a permit gets issued, you can't say, well, it's not permitted there, and we don't like it in that location. If they got the permit, they get to do it, and if you have, made that most wide open ABC election, and again, that's a referendum of the whole, everybody in the town, then they would, they basically establishments at that point would just be subject to whatever ABC commission permits, and there, like Justin says, they got voluminous regulations about what has to happen to get the permit, but it would kind of take all of it out of your, your hands, you wouldn't have restricted it.
So somebody could walk into a gas station, buy a can of beer, and sit on the curb and drink it?
Yes.
Okay, Joe?
The social district thing has some appeal to me, because I always want us to be anxious to have downtown events and stuff, music and all, and that, but is there any board members pushing to, if, if the, if we're at level three, and level four is wide open, is there, is, is there a consensus or a push to go to level four?
I'll jump on that boat. I mean, I think we're wide open right now, we got a brewery anchored in each side of town. Um, I, I think the fear of us having bars in town has already come to fruition.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to speak to social districting a little bit, since I own an ABC establishment, I'm pretty familiar with how, what their intent seems to be anyway, communicated with us, and just fill you guys in a little bit, so, like they were saying, there would be a lot of regulations behind it. And, and just speak to what you said first, so I don't just skip off that, like, I, I kind of agree, I don't, I don't see that last tier being a great difference either, that we're even having a conversation about social districting, the state's open to this, I mean, culture's changed quite a bit around it. But the social district would require, you have to have a risk plan, my business sells you a beer that you walk around with, I have to sell you a specialized cup that says my business name, it also has to tell you to drink responsibly, it also has to tell you you have to be twenty-one to drink, and you have to set some kind of penalty for if you have something that's not that. So there'd be some kind of civil penalty of some sort for somebody walking around with a natty light can, kind of thing. This is a potential for town revenue too, in that, um, just as an added incentive to that, to incentivize tactic towns to get involved.
So there's two different, two different issues here, right? I think we're kind of dancing back and forth. So first, I guess, is the food establishment, which tier are you at, what, where do we go on that? And then let's, we'll talk about the social district piece, so with tiers.
Well, with the tiers, we'd have to vote to put it on a ballot, and then the people would vote for it, but if we don't, if we choose not to do that, there's still an actionable item, and that is, we could allow an establishment, like Yonder's the one that wants to have alcohol, we allow private clubs, but I think it's our own ordinance that defines the parameters of what makes it a private club, distance to houses and that type of stuff. So an action item is to, is to look at that ordinance and see if, if you can allow them to become a private club, given their location, or anybody else that comes along with it. We don't want to go full scale tier four, we could still help those businesses by changing our own regulations.
With John, one instance, I don't, it's not because of anything in the, the ordinance might not have defined, our local ordinance might not have defined this private club, and I guess that, that may be a factor. The, the thing they ran into, and I think is more likely, is we define restaurants a certain way, the state ABC law defines it a certain way, they don't meet the state definition that we don't have any control over, so they couldn't get an ABC permit, and nothing you were gonna do locally, I think, was gonna permit that, short of maybe change definition of a private club. And, and, and on that end, and it's sort of, several people have said this, and I think we did tell that, that particular entity at the time, come back when this is a broader issue, because I think it's terrible business for you all to start going around to change regulations from what one person wants to see. I, I wouldn't, can't recommend you do that.
That being said, we don't know what we're missing. I mean, we're, I go out of town a lot to eat at restaurants that have less than thirty-six seats. I mean, I spend a lot of money in different towns around here, so we don't have small restaurants, um, because we have regulations in place that impede that type of activity, so it's kind of a cart horse thing, and we don't have people coming before us, because it, it's not allowed, they don't exist already.
Who's the thirty-six seat? Is that the state or us?
Yeah.
So how do the other places get around it, David?
Well, if they're in a county where they've gone to that tier four.
Yeah, Jackson County.
Where they just open the door for anybody, then it doesn't matter with that number.
Clayton, Jackson County, a lot of them have small, for a small mall to have thirty-six seats inside the restaurant is kind of difficult, so we're, we're kind of only allowing fats in like larger chain restaurants to serve alcohol, and it's that of your smaller establishments, and that's what we're gonna get, we're not gonna get small places. Adam?
I, I had the benefit of speaking with, uh, Mr. Myers, when he was the ABC, the head of ABC in our area, and he, you know, with that Yonder situation, they could have been a private club based on the way our ABC regulations are in that tier three, but then you'd have to sign a private club membership to get breakfast there too. Like, anything they then sell under that blanket of Yonder, so they did qualify to be a private club, it just, pretty much destroyed their opportunity to be a normal restaurant.
They can't pick and choose and say, after seven at night, we're a private club, but at eight in the morning, hey, anybody can come in.
I think the best example is the Cut in Silver, if anybody's ever been there. They do not have a traditional food license, because they just can't. It's, you have to be a member to eat there, kind of thing.
Think Yonder didn't meet our definition of private club?
Did they not?
But the new side, because that borders residential, you can't be within five hundred feet of a residence.
And the private club is, is, you pay a dollar a year, and you just walk in and you get breakfast, I mean, it, it's silly, I mean, alcohol laws are silly, but...
I will say though, yeah, we've looked at that for my business as an option, because we're, you know, a Department of Agriculture versus Department of Health business, and that's extra hoops to jump through to have that ABC license, but yeah, I, we've looked at it and other establishments to try it, your food sales take a dramatic hit, you are definitely de-incentivizing someone to sell food if you're making them be a private club, and that's a part of theirs, you know, brunch establishments, I think, are a big example.
Are there, obviously there's different opinions, and we're not here to, you know, vote on the issues today, but are there steps? And maybe this is one where it's like, you need more information, right? It's not, it doesn't sound like we have a consensus of a direction to move with a step, but is there more information we need at this point?
I think, I think we do need some more information on that, but I have to go back to what Mike said, you know, if, if we want to open the floodgates, that's gonna, that's more than just bringing in revenue, you'll have other issues to deal with, including law enforcement and other issues, and that's gonna affect our police department and so forth, so, uh, before we take the, take the step of opening up the floodgates and allow that everywhere, uh, I think we need a lot more information, and also, I think the public needs to know what the pluses and minuses are of such a move.
I did want to say, you think it's possible we could get somebody from, we have an ABC representative for the area, maybe get him to come by and walk us through what that other tier looks like, to give us an idea if that is something we're interested in or completely not interested in from, from a standpoint.
Chief?
I, I can talk to Stacy Cox, who is, you know, ALE, uh, for our region, her director, so I'll be glad to come by her and give you all the parallels, let me know when that, uh, when that needs to be.
Okay, so that's one step, invite ALE representative or ALE officer to come in and basically educate the board on what that process or what the outcome to that.
We can find out if you can open a beer at the BP and sit on the curb and drink it.
You sell a hot dog, you, you can, consider the food vendor, they sell food, that's...
I think they have to have the perimeter part of their ALE application, though.
And again, this is what we'll bring.
A quasi barrier that divides the public from... There's a quasi-barrier that divides the public from the establishment.
Yeah.
All right. And it sounds like we are going more down the line of education or information here. So what other, what other steps do you all need right now to be able to get more informed, to get to a point where you can make a decision on this?
Seems like a good start there.
Okay. Reid, did you have another step?
One question that we ran into last time is, is what's the process like of getting it on the ballot? If we wanted to do that, I think we have to vote to advance it to the ballot. What's the timeline on that type of thing?
Didn't we miss it last year, because it was past the deadline?
It did get past the deadline, and I think it doesn't have to be, you'd have to be at your ready, so you can't do it until next year, anyway. I don't think you can do it in an office, it has to be on the town election.
Well, we wouldn't want to pay for a special election.
Yeah, you don't, and you don't.
Right. So process and kind of timeline for getting that on the ballot, okay? Any other-
I don't know how the best way to do that. I would love to see information on social districts get to all of us, so we can look at that and really individually be able to evaluate what the pros and cons are.
My second, social districts.
And that's probably an easy one, to get a summary of the social districts and kind of what that would look like, what the process would be, and all that.
We can do that. As we do it, one thing I think to bear in mind, and I have to go back and look at, I have a very clear memory that when we redid the town square, Main Street, the county, they kind of took that issue off of the plate and said, no alcohol possession in town square. So, just bear that in mind. I mean, I think you can still do the social district along Main Street or somewhere else if you wanted to. Maybe several somewhere else.
Just a question for you, do you think, was that primarily moral judgment on accounting, in your opinion, or you think that's a liability judgment on accounting?
It could be either, and there was no such thing as a social district at the time. So, I mean, things have changed somewhat, and if you, and I think if you're for it, then maybe something to ask for a change in the lease.
Chief, do you have something you want to add?
I was just going to ask for a deadline on getting Ms. Cox here.
Okay.
If that comes from the town manager or council, how do you all?
Either the spring or the fall. Book in budget season, probably.
I say spring.
Good question.
Spring's fine.
Spring?
We're cooking up our spring.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say, you've got a board meeting coming up at some point, that's going to be a doozy. All right, so, anything else in terms of actionable things you can do right now with this issue?
Lost in the shuffle, private club, we could look at what our private club parameters are in ordinary review, and see if we are catching somebody by the leg, that maybe it would benefit the town if they weren't caught by the leg.
Okay. Everybody okay adding that, too?
I mean, I heard him say chicken and egg, but are there other places other than Yonder who have been sort of chomping at the bit?
Um-
Do we know?
Nobody official, but I've definitely had conversations with dozens of people interested in businesses like that, and then when they find this information out, they move on. Or they change dramatically what their business plan is, I think. I think it is impacting the community a little bit.
It has happened Yonder twice in two locations, though.
All right. If you're good to move on, I'm going to propose one more five-minute break, and then we've got about an hour left, so we'll be back, back in five minutes.
Is nobody going to comment on the social districting, being the new social distancing? Like you men, you almost said it.
Yeah.
The glossy pisses people off. You know, the glossy pisses people off. Start talking about beer, you know?
Yeah, freedom. You have an addictive product, and you have McDonald's, and you can't have no store. I don't know. It doesn't go away. Obviously, I know that the rent. But they try to, you have to pass that. It has to be payroll. I mean, it's not, you don't advertise. And so, there's only, the price you pay for the product, and the price you sell, that's it. So then, that's your building, and you got to pay. You can't, you don't pay someone. Yes, it was. Because if your payment timing is wrong, obviously, I would say that's why it's like a waste. And this would take Todd, based on the math, years. Maybe, unless it's me. It ain't going to be me. But it is certain, that's what she's saying. And John, he told the blind eyes, he says, "Don't even pay him." That's why I talk about his industry and stuff. You got to give him a chance to get on the leg, get him six or eight years or whatever. But we're way past that.
11 years of 88% equaling 70 grand on the low, is that? It's suspicious.
And we don't even know how much rate they pay. You have to give dollars. Got something weird, man. She went up to her last to make the burger check. He is, he's- You know how that, that is. So I'm just telling you, we have to.
You think that this is just, he has to present something.
For five times of this conversation-
But we're going to have to do something.
All right, was that ready to go?
It's just a wall, it's a wall in here.
All right, we've got, we've got about one hour, one hour left. So we'll see how many of these we can get through, and just kind of move through them, make sure we do them justice, but also that we keep it moving a little bit. So the next issue is hospital. So is somebody that can educate, educate me, educate the group on kind of what's concerned, what the issue is there, what the possibilities or opportunity might be.
Jackson, ready?
Talk a little bit about that. Town manager can do that as well. Would you all know the new hospital? Some of us took a tour of the new hospital under construction here this past Thursday, and it's 82,500 square feet, pretty good-sized building, and it's going to cost us $68 million, they think, and it's supposed to be open, finished by this summer, before the end of the summer day, and it's off the date that the contractor mentioned. So what that brings about, the first question is, what's going to happen to the old hospital if they move out and relocate to the new facility over here on the Four Lane Highway? So there's been a lot of speculation, what's going to happen to it. The one thing that we found out from talking to the CEO is that they will not, they will not allow the hospital property, the old hospital property, to be owned or operated by anybody in the healthcare business. It's just part of their, part of their reasoning. And for that reason, they, they can't donate it to the county, because the county depends on Medicare, Medicaid, EMS, all these other, hospital health departments, so forth, all these other sources of federal money for, for healthcare and so forth, so they can't do that. Now, the other option was the town, Town of Franklin, we're not in the healthcare business, although we have a couple of healthcare professionals with us now, right? At least two of them here that I know of, but we don't operate any kind of healthcare facility. So they talked to some of us about the possibility of transferring that property over to the town. We haven't really had a discussion about this, but I did get a chance to do a little research and take a look, and had a chance to go through the hospital. I know we haven't been in there except for medical reasons, or to visit somebody who was in there because of that. So I wasn't real familiar with the layout, what was there. I found out a little bit about the history and the background, and some of you folks probably know more about that history and background than I do, but the oldest building in that complex was built around 1955, and has some, has some issues to deal with. Of course, in 1955, regulations were not what they are in 2022, and so there's some things that weren't done, there is, there's some issues there. But that property, I asked, I asked them, "Well, how much is that property?" Now, the actual, the hospital owns more than just the property where the hospital sits. Many people may not be aware of that, but they own about 15 different pieces of property in that general area. Bits and pieces, some of it contiguous, some of it separate. The property that the hospital itself is sitting on is about 13 acres, 12.98 acres. The property that they're building the new hospital on is this 12.89 acres, up there where the, where the new hospital is going. So, I asked them, "Well, what about the other properties that are around the hospital there? Are you willing to give those away, too?" You have to ask, you don't ever find out. So, they said, "Well, altogether, there was about 16 point something acres." So that, my calculations, I figured that was an awful property. There's two pretty good-sized tracts of land that are undeveloped on past the hospital, that I'm sure they're going to want to keep, keep for sales for future sale or use or something, but-
One runs all the way to the Wild Oak Street neighborhood, if I'm not mistaken.
Pardon me?
One piece runs all the way to the Wild Oak Street neighborhood.
Oh, it does, it does, absolutely, yeah. There's, there's a, let's see, about, there's about almost nine acres, two tracts up there together, and a house is on one of them. But, so anyway, that's, that's still up in there, nobody knows just exactly which pieces they're talking about, besides the main building. But that is, that is something. We did have a chance to go through the old hospital, and a good friend of mine, who was the director of engineering for that hospital for 15 years, Gary Thompson, some of you may know Gary, he retired, went to work on a big project down in Georgia, he still comes back and forth, and he'd like to move back in here, but he's retired now. But I asked him, I said, "Gary, how about walking around the hospital a little bit and tell me what you see, as far as observations, and look at it as somebody who might own that property, what would you be concerned about?" So he did, he came up, went with us to the hospital. He enjoyed that, because he got to see a lot of folks he hadn't seen in a long time, an old reunion there, but, but he pointed out several things that, I asked him, "Do me a little write-up or something," and he's available if we want more information. He can give you all kinds of history about everything from the heat and air conditioning system, to the power, to the electricity, to the cables, to the telephone systems, to all, everything about the property. He has had some dealings with each piece of it, and so, as we go through this process, if the town decides that that's something that we want to pursue, and accepting that, he would be a good resource for us to have, to get some background information on the lay of the land. He said, of course, they got three generators up there. Then one of the things that we did notice, as far as an environmental issue, is under the old VCT tile, back when it was put down years ago, there were no environmental regulations really to cover that, and it was put down with asbestos, and so, all that stuff would have to be, if there's going to be anything done to it, it has to be taken up, so that's something. And that was a building that was built in 1974, and so you got a 55 building, a 74 building, and then the latest addition where the outpatient surgery and outpatient clinic and so forth is, and next to the emergency room, that's the newest part right there. We didn't take a look, he said that the building has been reworked inside, as far as the plumbing's concerned, and one issue that he had written down was that, one of the things that you think about when you look at that building is, when it rains, where does the water go? And part of the water goes down through drains that go into the building and come out at another place, and that's, that's probably not a good design feature that was put into it when it was built. That's something that we need to be looked at. We looked at the roofs, we looked at the structure, and we looked at the quality, and it's in pretty good shape. We didn't look at the kitchen, we just didn't take the time to look at the kitchen. I've been in that kitchen before, some of you have too, especially if you're in a road club meeting up there, when they used to meet up there. But didn't look at that, but, and the electrical system might need some mind work, but not a lot. It's, a building of that size uses a lot of electricity, especially under their types of operation, where they're running MRIs and those types of equipment, that really have a lot of demand for electricity. If we, if the town were to ever take it over, we probably wouldn't be using as much electricity as they do, but they're getting, one of the fellows who does their work there at the hospital now, as far as engineering goes, is going to get me some actual documentation on what their monthly utility bills cost, so that'll be some information that's going to be helpful for us to have before the board makes any kind of final decision. But the electrical system and everything else seem to be in pretty good shape. And Gary says he'd be glad to be there anytime we need him, and gives him another opportunity to come back to Franklin for a little while.
Let me frame the issue here. Do we believe that it is going to be offered to the town by the hospital to sign a deed over, so that the town owns the 12 acres, I say, including the building? Is that what we're expecting, or has that formal offer already been made? Or is it expected to be made?
The, my interpretation is that, unless I hear otherwise, is that the, the corporation is interested in transferring it to the town. And we don't have an agreement on that, but we do know what their guidelines are, as far as use of the building from here on out.
And right now, we expect that the transfer will be for no consideration, being paid by the town, but taking it as is, all warrants, taking it as is, with the restriction on the usage, right?
That's my first question.
Stacy?
Tommy Jenkins and I were contacted two or three months ago, it was before the election, by a group that does senior housing. It's a, it's a nonprofit in the region, they're looking at Macon County, and we took them around to several sites. They were most interested in the hospital, though, and so my question is, if we had an entity like that, who fell within, outside the restrictions that would come with the deed, would we then be able to, let's say we, we took the deed on Monday, and then on Tuesday, sell it to another entity?
I'm not sure about that, that's a legal question, that's a look at the documentation on how that would, sometimes, it's been my experience, that sometimes they'll say, "These are the restrictions, and they're in place for X number of months or years, and after that period of time, then you can do whatever you want to with it." I'm not sure if there is a timeline in there or not, we haven't got that far along in any details yet.
It wouldn't make sense that they would care, if they gave it to the town, and if they knew it couldn't be used to compete with the hospital, they wouldn't, shouldn't have any reason to say that town has to own it five years, I'd say. John, jump in if you see, it wouldn't matter to them, as long as they didn't have to pay the tax on it.
If you know what you want it to be ahead of time, I mean, it seems like that could be part of the conversation, right? They don't want to continue to own this thing and pay for it, so-
They pay money.
Because they want it all for books. And you could, I mean, and selling it would be great, and it's also a way to, you know, if it's affordable housing, then you could make a deal to somebody, too. I mean, you could give that to them, or give them at a reduced cost, to try to incentivize somebody doing that project here, so you've got both those, you've got those options.
Stacy, they don't do any kind of healthcare-
And based on conversations that we have with Mr. Kendall, that it's going to take them some time to get the medical equipment out. They're putting new equipment in the new facility, but they still have to get the old equipment out, because we can't legally own that equipment, because it is considered-
Stacy, they don't do any kind of healthcare providing for residents.
Mr. Kendall, that it's going to take them some time to get the medical equipment out. They're putting new equipment in the new facility, but they still have to get the old equipment out because we can't legally own that equipment because it is considered prescriptive and regulated by the DEA and things like that. So it's going to take them almost a year to get that equipment out of there. So it won't be something we can turn over if we accept it quickly.
Well, but we wouldn't want to accept it until they're through getting their equipment out, right?
I mean, yes. I think you could cover bases if you had to with the, you know, the minority, the property deed to you, but I'd rather not. I mean, I'd much rather than you get it, I mean, both in physical terms and title wise.
You wouldn't want to pay a power bill for a year while you're waiting on them to get that stuff out of there.
It's going to fall apart quickly, too, I mean, without maintenance. I understand the county can't take it, and the county might not even want it. Let's say we did take it, and then the county decided they want to use part of the property in the future. Would they, would we be precluded to giving it to an entity like that, or selling it to an entity like that, even if it's for non-medical purposes?
Can you log with the building?
Yeah, can we log with the building?
You probably could, as long as it didn't involve anything in a medical.
Yeah, let's say they want to turn to a courthouse.
Hold on, let's, let's.
Yes, you actually can, because after it becomes ours, we can do, as long as it's not a competing medical entity, do with it what we wish.
Okay.
All right, Joe.
Isn't the million dollar question, we know if we guys are going to have to tear the damn thing down, and how much would it cost to get that building off that property, vis a vis what's the property worth after the building's gone? I can't imagine that we would, other than a very short term Band-Aid, have that building functional, so that that's the best use of that property? And how much would it cost to demolish that building?
Well, I think you need to do an evaluation by somebody who's qualified to say if it's going to cost you X number of dollars to tear it down. But also, along with that, they need to have, we need to have some kind of a verification from an engineering company that says, this is what condition it's in, this needs to be replaced, this needs to be torn down, maybe some of it, maybe all of it, I don't know. But you have to compare that with what it would cost to keep it for a while and find another use for it, instead of just ignoring the facts and just tear it down. I think you need to evaluate that, whether it's worthwhile to keep part of it up, or keep all of it up, or not even accept it. But I think we need to have an evaluation done before we make any kind of final decision as to whether we not, whether or not the town wants to own it. But I do think that the town needs to be a partner and a player in this whole process because it's going to affect the town of Franklin, because our next door neighbor right behind that property joins this property right here. And whatever happens over there may affect not only this, but the rest of the town. But I think we, I want to make sure, from a personal perspective, that the town of Franklin has a say in what happens with that.
Rita, and then David.
When you talk about the, I think we do need an evaluation. I'd like for them to pay for it, but they probably wouldn't. But I think we need to know more about it. This is, seems to me, I mean, I've read several stories about places that take hospitals on and what they've done with them. And I talked to Amy about some of the research. I mean, if we're talking asbestos, that is huge money to get shut up. I mean, it is not an easy thing to do. So I'd like for the evaluation to also look at, because we've had a lot of rural hospitals closed in the state and in the country. What have played people done with it, and at what expense? Because it's, those data are out there, and we, we need to know more about a big old building like that. And maybe an engineer could tell us some of that. But this is a specialized type of building. So I'd like the evaluation to include that.
David.
I think they know what they have to a certain extent. I'm quite certain that they've probably paid for some studies, and they know what asbestos is in there. So I would like for us to ask them to be privy to whatever information. They already have engineering and otherwise contaminants. We would definitely need a guesstimate on removal of the building going forward. And I agree with Jack, I think we do have some sort of a, of a role in this, whether it's a fence, or we're just laundering the building, whatever it is, I think we do have some sort of a say in it.
Not a fence?
We just get it and wash our hands of it and send it down the road?
Different kind of fence.
Joe.
Do we have any competition for that? Maybe, let's just say, no, we ain't taking it. Really, is to be, can they market that, you know, to private industry? If we don't take it, they still own it, we still get the tax revenues from it, we won't get as much from the personal property or whatever the equipment, but still, it will be income producing, and we won't have to pay the power bill each month. Okay, let's say we don't take it. I mean, is some developer going to come buy it?
It's possible, but it happened in Waynesville when it took them 30 years to sell it.
And you collected, they collected rent on it all 30 years? They collected tax?
No, the county actually took it over, put in social services, which was a nightmare to maintain, and then finally, they turned it into senior apartments over there. So there may be, there may be another private entity that's interested in it, we don't know. And I'll try to find out, and the manager and so forth, we can try to find out all we can about what they've looked at as far as options. One of the things I asked them, I says, well, y'all been in the hospital business for a long time. They are, HCA is a big outfit, one of the biggest in the country. What has happened to the hospitals that y'all closed? What's been their use? And how has that benefited the community that you moved out of, or that you relocated to another facility? I'd like to see what's happened to them, and what the advantages are, and what the opportunities are for something to be used. I don't want to see another vacant, empty building with the windows knocked out of it in town. And I don't think anybody else does either. But we need to make sure that we can do something, or have some influence on them, so that it becomes a positive and not a negative aspect of Franklin.
Stacy. So the entity that came and met with me and Tommy is the same one doing the apartments in Waynesville. And if it's okay with the board, I'd like to invite them over, I guess preliminarily, to talk to maybe Amy and Jack, and then eventually to the board, because they were very interested in this building, and interested in a, I mean, a fairly quick turnaround.
I think it'd be good to talk to them before we approach with our list of whatever it might be to the CEO and the people at the hospital.
Yeah, and they wouldn't be competing. They don't provide any medical services. And it's, some of the housing is subsidized, and some of it is, you know, it's paid for.
Is everyone's building too?
Yeah, I guess that's the question, what's staying?
They were interested in the building itself.
To convert it or to tear it down and build it?
To convert it.
Convert it to apartments for rooms.
So is that a concrete step that we could put down at least to engage the developer in that initial conversation about their interest?
I think so. I think not only that, but any other, we'll do a little more research on what has become of hospitals that have no longer been used as hospitals, but are serving some other purpose in the community. I think we do a little more research and talk to the folks that Stacy's talking about, and then we talk to the folks at the hospital and see what they can share with us.
I want to talk to the demolition.
Who's going to do the, who's doing the research? Are we asking the hospital, just kind of what their experience?
No, we're going to do it ourselves. I think we can do it with our staff.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that we request any engineering or pollutant reports that HCA has on the building. I'm certain they paid a lot of money to study the building before they spent $68 billion to build the hospital.
Yeah, I think we need that, and I think we also need, as Joe said, take a look, the board needs to know, if you decide that you want to accept it, but you want to take it down, what's it going to cost to do that?
Research on vacant hospitals, access to any studies, reports that they have done on the building. And then.
Cost of demolition.
Cost of demolition. Rita?
Jack, Amy, the one that they're doing in Waynesville looks like that they're doing it in the historic part of the hospital, is that not correct?
I think they got the entire building. The first part of that building was housed the Board of Education. I'm not sure if they're still in there or not.
They're moving across the street.
They're moving across the street to another building. So they're actually taking the entire property that was the old hospital at one time, the front part is where the administrative offices and so forth, where, that's where the County Board of Education is now, central office.
And they did get historic tax credits to work on this building. Angel does not have that historic heritage.
They don't get historic tax credits.
And it doesn't look like that way.
But I imagine they're going after low income housing tax credit.
They are. Probably, they would. David.
As an architectural salvage guy, I'm into saving things, but it may very well be that if the entire hospital is not usable, the part that is no longer usable could be cut off. I mean, I would guess that new addition is not just hanging by some hangers onto the old building. I think it's probably a freestanding building. That may be put into the equation, too, that, you know, there's still, whatever, 10,000 square feet that was built in the 2000s.
Yeah.
Well, let's face it, 1954, there's no telling what's entombed within that that nobody knows anything about.
Any other, any other immediate steps that can be taken right now to move this issue forward?
Don't take no lead until we vote to do it.
We've got some time to work on this. I'd like for us to set up a timetable to report back to the board on our findings sometime within the next 90 days.
Okay.
And then Amy.
Rita.
What about public input? Is this something that we'd want to have? I can see Joe shaking his head already, I don't think a blind person would see that. But is that something that we, I mean, this is a huge deal.
Could they add something to it?
Except, they don't have.
They need to, they need to, they'll have to take it, they give it to you, or whatever. I mean, can they add? If they could add specific.
Well, as a planner, if we were going to take it, demolish it, and then create something new, I would say, yeah, let's have, let's have a firm come in, do a study, do a public process on the redesign. But as the building, I don't, I don't know.
If you go to housing, if you go to tax credit housing, you'll have to have some input around that at some point.
I think you need to have more information before you have the public weigh in on it, because they're going to take a bit of piece of information, a piece of information here, and put together what they think is the best deal for that, without knowing the information that we all have.
No, I'm thinking that we would have, we wouldn't just say, come and tell us everything you've been thinking. That we would have options, that this is what the board's considering.
So I think that may be after your first 90 days, you know, once you've done some of these initial steps, like, and you've got more information, then maybe that's an option down the road. John?
I think you are effectively sharing with everybody your thoughts about this, in a way that you wouldn't, you didn't have to. Because this, you know, I came around the idea, it wouldn't have been legal for you all to go into closed sessions and talk about every bit of this, because it's property acquisition. And you didn't do it. And I don't recommend you do it, because I do think it's such an important, huge chunk of town, it's right there, it's such a big piece of property, everybody knows about it. I think you're doing this in a way that if the public wants to be involved and come give you their thoughts on it, they're going to have the ability to do that, and know exactly what steps you're taking.
Write that down, Mia.
Yeah, good point.
And make it happen to ABC stores.
The mother of all ABC stores. All right, anything else? With about 40 minutes left on our deadline, anything else to add in terms of initial steps to get you guys at least some momentum and move forward a little bit on this?
Moving on. ARPA funding.
Remind us how much it is, Amy.
Question I would have, I guess initially, Russ, is are we, are we pretty clear on what the ARPA money can be used for? And I think probably our manager probably has a better handle on this than we do about what it can and can't be used for, and concerning our account improvement things. I think one of the things that we talked about before our board meeting was, try to use this money, this federal money, to benefit as many people in town as we could. And you can do that by improvements to our infrastructure water sewer.
And now that they have finalized some more of the ARPA rules, we do have the potential to actually use some of that funding for sidewalks that we didn't have previous. Between the two tranches of money, we have about $1.3 million. So 654,000 that we got this current year, 654,000 that we get, well, actually later this year. If you'll recall, we gave about $80,000 out for our essential employees as a one-time bonus. So we've still got about $1.2 billion that we've got available to utilize for different projects that are out there. At this point, the projects that we discussed before for water sewer, except for the Wilkie Street project, are already budgeted. That may be a place where you want to consider utilizing your ARPA funding. Of course, sidewalks was again a priority of the council. And now that we know we can use that for sidewalks, it does help to offset some of that power bill concern that we had, because power bill you can use for streets and sidewalks. And unfortunately, our power bill funding that we get from the state has been decreasing every year. We only get about $130,000 annually, and we probably have anywhere between $2 and $4 million worth of sidewalks if you repair, replace all of them.
And not to steer this in any particular direction, because that's not my job, but as I said last night, we said, grant money for sidewalks is more or less nonexistent in the world. So in terms of free money that's going to come along that could help you with this sidewalk projects like this, unless you're just taking it out of the general fund piecemeal over the course of time, it's not coming along again, probably.
If we have, if we have a project that's already underway, and we're spending local money on it, can we replace that, or stop at this point and say, we're going to use some of this money to do more, or finish this project that we've already started? We can do that, whether it's water, sewer, or sidewalks.
Okay. David?
We have, there's most of the sewer and water funded, except for Wilkie Street. We don't have any funding for sidewalks, but we're going to need some funding for sidewalks.
We are, I mean, we have the power bill funds that we can utilize, but as far as actual funding set aside specifically for sidewalks, and based on the costs of everything going up and the materials, you would have had to have supplemented that from the general fund.
Okay.
Well, being as the, we already have a, have a device in place to fund most of the sewer and water, we do not have a way to fund the sidewalks. I think it behooves us to look at putting some of it towards sidewalks, some of it towards the unfunded sewer and water. I wanted to add, we passed a couple of years ago, the ADA parameters, that any sidewalks we laid had to be ADA compliant, which means five feet, I believe, under Joe and I's assistance, insistence, we modified that to allow, if there's a really narrow spot where, you know, you had to cut a bank back and there's a creek on one side, we can do it narrower for four feet, as long as there's a five foot section every 100 feet or so. And that's a way to save money. If we can't cram a five foot sidewalk in, we can do a four foot sidewalk and have a five foot spot every certain amount of feet.
Right, and with the refinal is currently doing our ADA transition plan, they should be able to report to us in April, and you will have some more concrete numbers related to the sidewalks and the considerations and concerns they have related to crosswalks and so on.
And we're going to just, a little different than what we've done with the other ones, since this is a little different conversation, we're just going to write down some of the ideas you guys have, and not just go straight to concrete steps at this point.
So what, what do we, I hear water, I hear sewer, I hear sidewalks. What are the other logical uses that we could put on the table and use it for?
Well, I have a question, your marsh wall concept, that's not something we could use some of that money for, I would assume, I'm assuming.
The what concept?
The marsh or wall.
The wetlands.
I mean, what, yeah, what are our options for us of the money?
May I have a vacant answer, so sure?
Okay, so there are four parts, essentially, there are four categories. It's premium pay, it is revenue loss, it is infrastructure, and it is responding to the impacts of COVID-19. So public health and economic hits that your town would have taken.
I'm saying the infrastructure.
Well, and then the catch is?
The catch is, the newest final rule that Treasury just released that gives everyone final information, is that that category, the revenue loss category, there's a really complicated calculator, formula to figure out what, how you would determine your revenue loss. They've decided it's too complicated, we're getting rid of it, up to $10 million, you can pretty much provide services, including the town, or you can use it in a myriad of other ways.
You can just say you lost up to $10 million.
I don't think we're going that direction, this board.
But it gives you the flexibility, like, that's a.
How much will Wilkie Street cost? How much will Wilkie Street cost?
We haven't had any engineering done.
You got an idea?
We've already bought the land, right?
I mean, the.
Or no, we're not, we're, nevermind.
We're talking about the sewer. Is it a half million dollars?
Probably going to be about $750,000 to the town.
Well, hell, that's most of it, right? I mean, really, it is, you know, if you have to use it and you want to use a safe haven, then that's where most, a lot of the money's going to go. I want sidewalks, I want a good chunk for sidewalks.
But I will say, when we do line replacements in the budget every year, like, for example, this year for sewer line replacements, we have $675,000 budgeted, which that takes that project on Sloan Street and all that. that project on Sloan Street and all the heels. We always put a decent-sized pot of money in there for line replacements.
And that's rate payers versus the general, that's, it's also a whole different body of, of, of money.
It's enterprise.
Enterprise fund, right, yeah.
But are, are some of these water and sewer projects that we're, we've got on the drawing board are paid for with borrowed money? Is that correct? Do we don't have any borrowed money on any of those water and sewer products?
No.
That's good.
That, that's from the water treatment plant, and that's, that's not even come to fruition yet. So we're not even including that, right?
Stacy?
Not to go back to the hospital dead horse, but these projects we're talking about are mostly for, for the benefit of the new hospital. Is that correct? The water and sewer project?
The ones that are currently in the budget. Those are projects that are moving forward now.
So we're spending taxpayer money to help this new hospital. So that seems to me like, just as a placeholder back in that other subject, that we have a little bit of leverage in terms of negotiating the transfer, potential transfer of this hospital property.
Well, technically, they count as line extensions for the town. It's not specific for one entity or another.
Yeah, but we know it is, right?
So they need the capacity.
Is there, is there a distinction with this money that it goes, I mean, it's, it's, I guess it's given to the town?
Yes.
And is there a distinction between the general fund and the enterprise fund legally? Or in my mind, it almost like there is, because the enterprise fund doesn't necessarily cover just town people.
Well, the enterprise fund is supposed to be self-sufficient. That doesn't mean you can't contribute additional money to an enterprise fund if you want to do that. You can do that.
So. We set up a grant project ordinance for the town to put this pot of money in so that once you guys decide where you want these funds to go, we will distribute to the enterprise fund, the general fund, wherever. Um, so currently, it's just in holding until we decide.
And it is true that the revenues, like the enterprise side funds can't just go over to fund, you know, your general, for governmental purposes.
But general funds can.
So the funds that are in there, you can just take them back out, but you haven't put them in there yet.
Right, right. Because we don't have a plan.
Well, and that's one of the things they always said, too, right? Well, I guess with Cat, you know, don't move it somewhere you can't move it back out.
Well, the other thing I want to mention before, I don't want to jump in front of David, but there are other projects that I know of that are out there who would, that would like to be built and add to the tax base of the town if they have the utilities, water and sewer primarily. And so I wouldn't want to spend everything on one project without reserving some of that money that we could put towards something that's going to not only provide utility customers, but also improve our tax base.
So in terms of timeline, you've got to the end of '24 to obligate this money and the end of '26 to actually complete the project or spend the money. So David?
Two things. Our enterprise fund is fairly healthy and doing all right. Our sidewalk fund doesn't exist. So that boos me that, you know, use it, I don't want to put some of it towards Wilkie, but I, if sidewalks are coming down the pipe through the state ADA, then we're going to have to put some money there. My secondary thing is, you mentioned health as one of the parameters. Would helping to support a nationally recognized trail through downtown qualify as health?
Potentially.
But I think, but I think that's where you could just include in that rev, the revenue loss category basically is a catch-all for anything you want to do at this point in time. So you wouldn't even have to thread that needle with health and make that case. You would just include it in that bucket for revenue loss.
So then that's a pretty loose bucket of being able to spend.
It's a completely loose bucket of.
So we can spend on whatever we want.
That's what it sounds like.
We're still waiting on Paramlanzi to tell us.
Well, now we get to fight each other over where this money's going to go.
And John, I know we talked about it earlier, but please jump in if there's anything we say that's different than what you understand.
Well, we're not going to fight each other. We just killed the baby.
You have a guess for fun, have any set to school?
Boardwalk, baby. Boardwalk.
Golden Ocean.
I don't know. Marsh walk. I'd like to see, I'd like to see, uh, recommendations from our town manager and our utilities folks that are involved in the water and sewer on what they see as priorities are concerning things like Wilkie Street and so forth. And also, do we need to have some money in reserve for potential economic development projects that need infrastructure? And give us some information back so the board will have a clear idea on where is the best place to spend this money, which is going to be a one-time deal, probably.
Yeah. So put that into terms, Jack, for, make it easy for us to add. So for next step, like, what do you need for?
I'd like, I'd like to see a recommendation from our staff, our manager, uh, on, on what they see as really high priorities on infrastructure that, that, uh, that we wouldn't be able to do if we didn't have this money. And also, uh, also, uh, you know, and include, that includes not only water and sewer, but sidewalks as well. And also to let us know, uh, how much they would recommend that we hold in reserve for potential economic development projects that need water and sewer and infrastructure.
So maybe three to five kind of priority items and maybe what the price tag might look like on those.
We need to know that. Of course, the money comes in in two different years, so we can't, we can't spend it all at one time anyway. So we have to have, we have to have.
It'll be, the, the same tranche will be here in a few months.
We have to have a, you know, a multi-year plan on how to spend this money.
David?
Um, I'm going to jump on a different horse here for a second on the same topic. And that is, the, the money is ostensibly to alleviate, uh, the financial and mental pain that we've all had to go through for the past two years that is still going on. That being said, mental health, I understand we need to be responsible. We need to put it towards some infrastructure, but like, it wouldn't hurt us to, uh, look at doing something that we wouldn't normally do, like a marsh walk, or helping the Bartram Trail Society. Do something through town that can get us outdoors and, and get our mental health back to a, a healthier state. I mean, if we really reflect, this has been a pretty trying time the past couple of years. I think it behooves us to do something that benefits town residents, uh, uh, in a, in a recreation-type health manner.
I think that's a good idea, but I also would like to see us partner with some other people to, to make that work, not just take it all on the town's dollar.
I agree. Rita?
With the sidewalks, isn't it mostly replacing? Or are we talking about new places that don't have sidewalks, add-ins in, in the plan that's been?
Mostly just replacing existing, making them new.
Well, there are some new ones, though, that are prioritized.
Yeah. Most of the new ones that are coming out of the type are through DOT. Like, D Fort Street's going to be upgraded in the next year or two. Um, and on East Main, going up the hill towards, uh, that first street, that one will be done on the opposite side. Those are the only two current new sidewalk projects that are, other than the Georgia Road that's been working on right now.
That's a good question, Rita. And I just want to add that, um, we need to look at that with a, with a pretty good lens because from my perspective, not having a sidewalk and have, live in a neighborhood where people have paid taxes for 30 years, not even be able to see or smell a sidewalk. Um, a three-foot-wide sidewalk that is not in horrible condition is better than no sidewalk. I'd like to, again, look at what is legally permissible and maybe not redo a whole sidewalk just because it's old. Maybe redo some sections. And I, I'd like to see more sidewalk laid new and try to just maintain or, or patch together our existing sidewalk network and, and break ground on new sidewalk more so than focus on, on old sidewalks.
And I really think when you see the ADA transition plan, it's going to help spell out a lot of that for you. Because there are big places where they're able, the plan, where the plan's able to say, you can't build a five-foot sidewalk here. It won't work here. There's no, you know, it would be more dangerous here. You'll have your legal backing to say, we're not going to go to five feet here. It doesn't make any sense. Or it would be half a million dollars more. So if that's on the way.
Now, there are already some sidewalks in town that are a safety hazard. And I think those ought to be a top priority. Address those early before we start doing anything else as far as expansions out there. Because I just had a complaint this past week about someone who had fallen sometime back on a sidewalk and it was because it was not really ADA, uh, compliant. And I think that if there's a health hazard or safety hazard out there concerning our sidewalks, I think those ought to move to the top of the list as far as priority goes.
Well, and realizing, there's probably more debate to happen in the future, right? As you get this information from Amy and her staff, then I think you really start to drill into, all right, if we're doing sidewalks, then let's have an in-depth discussion. Are we repairing or extending or doing what? But in terms of like immediate information that you all need to take a step, is that, that list of three to five recommendations with price tags, is that where we want to be today? Stacy?
I want to add one more thing. We talked about earlier about plans that go on the shelf, you know? We've got that sidewalk plan that had significant public input. And what a great chance for people to see their government at work and be able to say, oh, I gave input to that plan. And now they're out, you know, digging dirt, laying concrete, whatever.
We have such good, I mean, we really have so many good studies that, that we've, I mean, I hope that when we come up with those three to five, that some of this big work that's been done will be reflected. I mean, that, that it's follows those plans.
That's your primary document for planning for the future, is your comprehensive?
And the Cofford Branch Greenway ranks hot in this and in that fight walk plan.
Yeah.
All right. Are we, good to proceed?
Only question I would have, how long would it take? Are you going to wait till a budget preparation or is that something that you'll do on a CIP plan?
We are probably looking at, it'll be part of the budget, but it'll be a CIP component to the budget so that you can see what the plans are immediately and then into the future. Because we know we can't do it all in one year. There's no way.
And there's no real thoughts about using some of that money to balance the budget, is there? Meaning that, that's not what we're thinking about here.
No, no, no. We're thinking about actual projects, work and everything. If we need any money to balance the budget, we'll do like we've done in years past and utilize fund balance.
Okay. All right. You've got about 20 minutes left, so you've got a decision, Nate. Main Street program for the Whitmire site.
I think the Whitmire property is going to take more than 20 minutes. And so it might be worthwhile for us to schedule, and we tried to do this last year, never got around to really getting into it, is just have one meeting to just talk about nothing but our current and future plans for that property. And I think it's going to take more than 20 minutes to discuss that because there are a lot of options on the table, what it could or couldn't be used for.
So your action step for Whitmire could be to schedule a future meeting to be able to study it more in depth.
Maybe. At least maybe have it as an agenda item in a meeting and talk about it.
The next step on the Whitmire property, somebody's going to have to come with a proposal. Not just, you know, what, what are our options? We've had options out the rear end. If, the next time I want to hear about the Whitmire property, if somebody comes and says, this is what we can do. I've had this, this, this is on the table. Is this what we want to do? Otherwise, we're just spinning our wheels.
Well, and I'm just going to, are we getting ready to do Whitmire? I was going to warn you. We're getting ready to do Whitmire.
No, I don't think so.
Amy, you want to add something?
From a direction standpoint, from you as council to me as manager, is that something you want me to put out and say, hey, we're accepting proposals?
That's what I was thinking, Amy.
Or?
Well, which direction are we going to go?
Input. I don't know if you need a, a, a 20-page.
That sounds like a poor sell sign to me.
I don't know if you need a 20-page detailed proposal, what you want to do it for. But I think there, I think we could ask for anybody who has proposals or ideas. And it might be just somebody who was reading the newspaper and saw that we were talking about this and said, I have an idea or proposal for that property. Why doesn't the town board consider this, that, the other? Like Joe said, there needs some specifics. What we had on that study was several things, and we really didn't focus on concentrating on each one of them. But I'd say, don't just limit it to a formal proposal, but any kind of input we can get from any, anybody who, who thinks they have a better idea on what that property could or should be used for.
So is that our action step for Whitmire today is to?
I'd like to get more input. And I wouldn't mind having a detailed proposal if somebody wanted to put one together. But I have an ideas, I have ideas about what I think it could be good for. And I'm sure everybody on the board has an idea of what they think is best for. But there's no way we can cover that in 15 or 20 minutes.
No. And we spent five.
It sounds like we're going to take at least two more. Um, man, I forgot half of what I was going to say. If, 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 it's been there for a long time. If somebody wants to buy it, they can. But if, if we're going to actively seek to dispose of it, let's don't spend $140,000 building a skate park there in April or May. So, I mean, it's kind of already default passive recreation. And an action step that we missed last year that I'd like to do this year is, this is great. This is fantastic. This is my comp plan. It'll go in my files. We said we were going to spread out that Whitmire study last year, and I never got a folder with that Whitmire study. And it ranks, I read it, it ranks first, passive recreation, and then it ranks land banking, and then it ranks commercial slash residential development. In the comp plan, it has a mix of all three. It has a mix of park space and development. But action step, please, somebody send out the Whitmire study to everybody so that we're all on the same page.
I've got a copy of it. Then I sent, I sent Stacy copies that I had.
And I forwarded it to you.
This, I'm old school. I like to be able to touch paper and circle things in large pictures. If it's in an email, it just.
It's on the web.
So send out, send out the Whitmire study.
It's, it's only 70 pages, right, Stacy?
That's right.
Well, you don't need all 70. You only need.
Well, I think you need all of it. It's all digital anyway. You can download it on your computer and read what you need, print off what you need or whatever.
Yeah, I'm not a digital guy. This is me. And it's only really, I think it's 18 or 19 pages.
Ask, let's ask if we, and we'll print up a printed copy for David then.
I think it behooves us to print one for everybody.
I do not need one.
That way it rolls.
I do not need one.
I don't need one printed. I got one.
You've seen it.
All right.
One follow-up on that, with the skate park. Remember our discussion when we were looking at, put the skate park where it was at, at Whitmire? We picked that corner so it would ha, it would handcuff to future issues. You could cut out a quarter acre, half acre, and leave the skate park. And this dude, you've got the rest to do whatever you want. So.
Stacy?
I think.
So we're talking about Whitmire.
We're doing Whitmire. All I want to say is like, overall, before, before we ask for proposals, it seems to me that as a board, we need to decide some sort of basic direction as to whether we're going for overall passive recreation, a mix of uses, or some sort of request for proposals on, uh, a mixed-use development or something. I mean, I don't, if we don't decide overall, the big picture, this is the direction we're going to go. I don't know how we make decisions on it.
And that may be where there's a larger discussion at another time, because that is, it's a big question.
And I want to add too briefly that I've always thought that there's room for a public-private partnership-type development of that property that's going to go out the window. I'm afraid you're going to go out the window with that if you just say, everybody give us your proposals because there's a set way you have to, to put those out for a bid type process. So you'll run right over if you just say, give us all your ideas. I, I don't know that it harms it just to say, we're generally trying to think through what to do with this property. I'm also worried you throw that wide open. There's, there's a lot of kooky answers out there. And you're going to get a lot.
One thing that came up last year, and I think it was Stacy, it may have been talking to the same developers you were talking about. We had a conversation with them. And, you know, we always thought maybe affordable housing, like, you know, and because of its location to, was it Franklin Tugler? It's up the hill. Like, that's, from my understanding, a tax credit project and affordable housing would be off the table for that property. So doesn't mean a private developer can't come in and say, I'm doing market rate. But I know that's been part of the discussion in the past. And in one of our conversations last year with somebody.
I can, I can tell you for a fact that's true because of the location of Franklin Tugler.
But what's the location parameter that you just said? What's it that's located?
So for low-income housing tax credits, there's a lot of different scoring things. And there's, there's cer, they've got to be certain miles from a grocery store, things like that. But one of the things that'll knock it off, like, I think it's distance to manufacturing, and I forget what it, what it is, but it's within that. And we looked, I think, every corner of the property a little bit, just kind of, you know, could you do it out at the far end? And there really was no way to do any project like that there.
Well, we fought this horse so much, I expect PCA would be on us by now. So.
At least people can use it now. I mean, it sat derelict with no trespassing signs on it for a decade.
So you're not going to decide what to do with it.
No, I think just as a next action step, just to say, we're going to have another meeting to discuss specifically the Whitmire property.
I hope everybody has a chance to read 2018 study. As soon as you get through reading it and are familiar with it, then we'll ask to set up a special meeting just to deal into the details of that. And I expect that meeting will probably last probably a couple hours anyway.
You should send a quiz to make sure everybody read this study.
I'm sending, I'm sending out something. You'll find out after, I'm in here for a while, that I'll probably be bugging you more than you want to be bugged. Uh, but I won't do anything to get us in trouble with the old meeting law, John. So, uh, I'll, I'll try to get your input on all that. Let, let, make sure everybody's up to speed before we jump in a boat and take off.
You should go play.
Very well.
My kids play with me. It's fantastic.
Can we park Main Street program? Can we park Main Street program or do we want to try to, do we think it's a quick item that we can kind of visit and?
I think it's quick. Somebody give it your best shot.
It wants to, I mean, the question is whether, the question is whether or not to rejoin the Main Street program or restart Franklin's Main Street program.
Does it cost us money?
Eventually, because they're going to require you to have...
The Main Street program coordinator, that's another decision.
Exactly.
My only comment on that, I think it's a great idea. We tried it before. I was on that committee. It was too big geographically because we were trying to accommodate everybody in town. If it's a true Main Street program, join it again, opens up a lot of opportunities for us. The only thing I would say is that I would like to see a coordinator who's not just an events coordinator, you know, for, for Main Street events, like I think it morphed into in the past. But somebody who's really actively involved with the business community downtown and looking at grant opportunities, funding opportunities, business, specific business needs. That's, that's all I would say.
And just as a frame of reference, Silva hired a business owner, a restaurant owner to do that. And so that person was already really engaged with downtown businesses. So they kind of already had those relationships, had that perspective. Because we all know from a government standpoint, we start telling, you know, thinking we know what business needs and we get into trouble in a hurry. So that has kind of been a model for, you know, not just an events person, but someone who really understood downtown businesses.
And that was on a time track basis. We don't, not paying benefits, not a full-time hiring.
That's, that's, I believe so. And that, I don't know exactly what Main Street's requirement is for that position, but I'm pretty sure Silva's is just contract.
Silva's is contract, but yours that you had in the past was a mid to mid full-time employee.
Yeah.
Is this something we can task our, our Streets of Franklin with looking at, to see if they would like to join this? Because that's already a loose group. And is this also, we could kick to the planning board and have them discuss the merits and pitfalls of the Main Street, Main Street program?
I don't know about going to the planning board.
Yeah, but that's planning board. But if you've got a downtown group already, then maybe that's part of that conversation.
And somebody could present it to them in a way that they would understand the program and...
Well, they, they may have to do some investigative work on their own to find out if they want to, they want to be part of. Some of them that are part of the Main Street program, I think, are probably part of the, they're the Street program right now, were part of the downtown program. And they may know what works, what didn't. I don't know.
Didn't the money we spent on that Main Street program person basically get moved to contract them with Tony Angel? Isn't that what, sort of how that evolved?
I don't have an answer. I'm sorry.
I want to say I have some recollection of that, but I may not.
I think that's right. Because I mean, his position is to kind of...
Is he still, is that the person that does the, is going to take it on the square?
No, that's done.
That's done.
Are we getting, are we getting requests from the merchants to reorganize?
Some of them would like to see that. But, I mean, eventually, I mean, it's got to be sanctioned by the town.
Yes, but we certainly won't, don't want to do something they don't want.
Right. Yeah.
Can we send, can we send a letter out to our Main Street merchants and owners to get their input on what they'd like to see? Can we, can we get some information, some feedback from the people who actually own and operate businesses downtown to let us know what their priorities are and what they'd like to see?
That's a good idea.
Not just Main Street.
But what, who could consider? I mean, are we talking about Backstreet too or just Main Street?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is I will say, speaking from the old Main Street, being in a business that kind of, I bought it around the time they kind of fell apart. But that, what Stacy said is very, like, their focus was so wide that most people who owned a business felt like they, they weren't really offering anything to them.
It got diluted.
Yeah, because they had too much to do to ever do anything very effective.
She wanted to keep it on the hill.
And that's part of it is you have to have a defined area that's workable, usable, that you know what services you're going to provide for them that they wouldn't necessarily get in another part of town. For example, that's decorative lighting, that's looking at different beautification efforts, planters, things like that. That's typically where your Main Street areas fall. It's working together. Most places have a municipal service district that is their Main Street district and they pay an extra tax for that. So those are always things that bring to the forefront to let...
Kind of kicker, like in Silva, it's been, there is no money attached to it. So it's, it's been good for coordination, it's been good for engagement. But like the state Main Street program doesn't have grant money that comes down to local Main Street. So if you, yeah, if you don't have a way to have revenue for that group, it's, it's a little limiting. I mean, it is still good for engagement, but...
I do remember when we did it before though, by being a member of the Main Street program, it did, before the state told us it was too big, it did open the door for some grant funding that was only specific to communities that had, that participated in that program.
And I'm not sure if that's still funded, but it may, it may, it could be.
I agree with Adam. I think, I guess probably our terminology, when you just say Main Street, people are just thinking about Main Street, but it really should be downtown, not just the Main Street. And so we should make sure that, that we don't exclude anybody who doesn't have a door opening on Main Street, but they are downtown.
Yeah. Well, I guess, yeah, focusing that defining space. But also, when you said like municipal, having a municipal district that has different tax rates, is that on a business? Can you tax the businesses? Or are you just talking about the property owners in that municipal district?
Usually it's the property owners themselves and they pay an additional tax, additional ad valorem tax.
So I will speak to that. I think that'll be a little bit of a challenge. You might want to make sure we reach out to these property owners more than the businesses because I know I rent my space. Everybody in my building rents. So while I would love, I would pay more taxes to do it, but it's not really on me. It's going to come through a rent process, through a rental agreement with the person that owns. And I can't speak, I won't say anything. I just don't know that every building owner's going to care a lot. That's been the issue historically.
So what would a Main Street program do that's not already been done? That's my question. Like you say, there was money there. What would, what would you do?
To have a, I mean, for us to have a coordinator who actually works with the local businesses to help meet needs, to do things like Amy was talking about, inside a district where you would have beautification, things like lighting, festivals. But beyond that, I mean, in my opinion, it should be somebody who also knows how to go out and look for, for funding.
And connect the resources, you know, like a, like a miniature economic developer almost that's saying, look, you need access to capital. I know about these revolving loan funds or really connect with the small business center or, you know, kind of connecting them to resources that maybe being a busy, busy business owner, they don't let John look to that.
We do most of that already. I mean, we already kind of treat Main Street special. I'm not saying we shouldn't. But to tap picket in there, I mean, that's a pretty big budget item that could fund some of this and that program could shift slightly and put an event that's held weekly, that's a, a great idea, on the ground, it doesn't work out as much as it works out in theory. But some of that money could go into that association or whatever. They could have more control over that every single week summer event downtown. It could turn into much more of a downtown event rather than a square event.
So can I just provide a concrete example? There are business owners now on Main Street who spend some of their time looking for, for grant funding, looking for these opportunities like revolving loan funds. So as business owners, they're spending their time doing that as opposed to running their business. I mean, I know this for a fact. Some of us work together to try to do this. And it would just, it would be better. I mean, last night I found out about programs that, that I wasn't aware of as a building owner downtown. It'd be great if there was a person you went to and, and you said, these are the resources I need. And that person could connect you to those resources.
Is there, is there a, a good working relationship between the downtown folks and the Chamber of Commerce? Do they work together? Or are they just too separate?
I've asked that question. I'd love to hear an answer.
I have to ask the question. You know the response.
Well, if it's not, what does it take to make sure that they do that? Because they shouldn't be competing with each other. They should be working with each other to benefit the people who patronize our businesses, whether they're on Main Street or Backstreet or anywhere else in town.
So we're at 12:30. Is there a step or two, Adam, I'll let you make that comment just a second. But is, are there steps towards Main Street? Are we far enough? Are we not?
Solicit feedback.
Yeah, solicit feedback from the merchants.
Do you do that like separately or is that in a board meeting of, hey, we're going to discuss the merits of this program and you invite them to?
Isn't, Amy, you're, are you the liaison to the Downtown Merchants Association?
To the Streets of Franklin.
Sure, I mean Streets of Franklin, yeah.
They have a meeting coming up on February the 1st. They will actually be meeting here. I will be here for that meeting, but I can send them a letter that they can distribute at that meeting.
So maybe determining the interest or, and doing it through that, that mechanism is your step for now.
But how would they know if they were interested if we didn't have a presentation about it? So we'd have to, I mean, wouldn't you have to have a presentation about what it is that they have the interest in?
Yeah.
Well, we can give them the basic information. The Main Street program has an application process and they just sort of outline, there's some pretty stuff out there on their website. Is that the Street USA?
Is there somebody on that group? I know you mentioned there's leftovers on that group from the former Main Street. Is there somebody you could tap to and say, hey, this is going to come up at that meeting? Could you kind of speak to that?
Brooke Real is the acting chair. There's two elections this time, so she may or may not be, but I can work with Brooke. That's my problem.
Okay. That's a good point.
I would like to just mention one brief thing is I like input, not just from the property owners, but also the people who operate the businesses who rent because they're the ones that are there every day. And I think it'd be good to get input from both the renters and the owners.
Okay. All right. So I think the other item, other than what came up on the, on the board last night was to take a walk up and discuss root and barrel. And I don't know if we want to set some parameters for this and kind of what the goal of this conversation is so that we, again, stay, stay on our time limit here. Mayor, do you want to talk about what kind of, what the, what the goal is?
12:30 now. Our schedule was to try to get out of here by 1 o'clock.
Out by 1.
These people are hungry or whatever.
That's right. We hadn't fed anybody in the world.
We don't have any food coming, right?
That's right.
So there's no use thinking about hanging around here the rest of the day. So I thought it would be a good idea if we go up there and everybody could take their own. And it's already marked off where you know the area they're talking about. You have a diagram that was given to you at our last board meeting and a proposal that the, that the owners asked the board to consider. I think it'd be good to look at it and ask yourself or each other, you know, what, what would this do to help our businesses? And what would it do, what impact would it have on this town's property? And, and then I guess it'll come back up again probably at our February meeting for the board to, if they want to take some action. As, as Joe said before, we've been down this road once before and it got, it got turned down. But there's a new board and a new proposal that's been brought before. So I think we ought to give it fair consideration, whether you're in favor of it or not.
Does everybody know the proposal?
I don't know the proposal.
Okay. So what, what?
I mean, they just, they want to build, they want to improve some of that area out there, slab it and put tables and sell and expand the restaurant.
Lease it, buy it.
Lease it. But now, here's John.
Yeah, we, we went down that path before.
But where's Pam Bryant? She owns the building.
No, they own the building.
Who?
The Murphys.
Yeah, they own it.
Did the Murphys buy it from Pam? Okay. I stand corrected. I was just saying...
Are we going to walk up there and come back down here and talk for five minutes about our stuff? I think that'd be appropriate to see it, then come back, hash out whatever, decide an action step or two.
Can we pick up lunch while we're there?
Okay. So go up, have a look for about five minutes. I mean, we shouldn't have to see it for long, right?
Bring that plan if you would, Jack. I mean, because it involves a mural and some string and lights and it, it looks a lot like this picture in the comp plan that they recommend.
Do we know for sure that it's two dollars?
Well, David said it's one thousand dollars.
It's going right per square foot.
It depends on if it's residential or commercial.
Commercial.
And I, I don't have it off the top of my head.
Inside heated, they see. Did the town help at all whenever you extended your patio? Did you have to get permission from us?
Yeah. So the way that worked, that's, 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 I don't, it's not 100% the same. So that's technically like a street.
Okay.
Which is a complicated situation there. But yeah, so basically that was a town asset like this and had to be given special permission to use. But I was not putting in any infrastructure. I was not changing anything. I was not altering concrete, breaking anything. All I was doing was putting up a barrier and tables on pre-existing.
But we granted permission to a private business use of our property?
Yeah.
Intenselyly?
Yeah. It was, uh...
In the middle of the...
It was, it was... It doesn't, it doesn't hurt though that that property is on a property map even though that street runs through there. It belongs to Benjamin Jace Wofford. So I don't know if it works the same when it actually is on the deed as Towneville Franklin property. I don't know. That's a John Henning question.
That had virtually no impact because that street's not used from there out, is it?
It is. It, that's a whole, that's a whole, there's a whole nother hour where the conversation, where that's used.
If you have a table sitting out there in the middle of it.
Yeah. Uh-uh. No, that, that's, yeah, that's, that's another long argument, the way that street operates.
But there is some precedence for us as a board to help a specific business that was attached to town controlled assets.
And there might be...
Based on the positive impact on the town.
And I don't know that the town was allowed to do that prior to some things the state changed with COVID. That really opened the door for me to even think to come and request that from the town. Otherwise, I never would have.
There's a difference between, we're going to lose businesses if we don't do something to help them have outside dining in the middle of a national, you know, pandemic versus this situation. All right. So we have five minutes. Are there steps?
I like what, what Joe said. If we're, we're not considering, you think, because we don't have a proposal to consider.
We don't have anything in front of us.
So maybe at this point, it's not your problem?
We don't know what to consider.
At the very least, we need, I'd like to request a proposal from them then, like, not just wait around. I'd at least like to tell them that's what we're looking for. We'd like something from them.
When you want to buy something, you put a, you put a number on the table. They didn't put a number on the table.
Yeah, but you'd already told them no once. Let, let's at least say, we're interested in leasing it only, if that's what we're interested in. We're interested in a three to five year lease, like you are. We want no concrete. You can put down papers, but we don't want you messing everything up to the point that we can never get back to it. I mean, I think we ought to give them a little pad of direction. I believe that outdoor dining is a good thing.
And how much a month?
Well, certainly not $100.
So is that, is that a draft from staff of what the, those conditions might be and then run it back through this group to see if that's amenable to you all?
Can I interject real quickly? I just did the math. It's a $1.50 per square foot. That's the good one. That's my going rate.
Or not?
Yeah.
If this is 600 square feet, so that would be $900 if it was indoor.
Yeah. That's what I would charge.
A month.
Yeah.
But it should be extra because we're getting rid of some green space and putting concrete and papers.
There's no, there's no infrastructure. Yeah, it's...
And they're getting such, how many more seats they're going to have?
He said 40. They said 40 more people.
My God. What, a restaurateur, somebody who's in the restaurant business could come and study that for about an hour and tell you how much an extra 40 seats six months out of the year, outdoor, would be worth to them. And it would be a hell of a lot more than they're thinking about.
Let's look at market rents here though. Rent is not expensive in downtown. I mean, I know of entire, I know of entire buildings that rent for $600 to $800 a month, like a whole floor of a building. So we don't want to get this downtown.
So what do you want to do?
Yeah.
Today? Or at least set in motion today? What, what can you do? Is there a step that can be taken? Maybe it's not a step.
It behooves us to give them some direction of what they can come back to us with. I mean, people, again, I don't know how many times I got to reference this. We spent $90,000 for this plan. If it's a junk plan, let's say it's a junk plan. People ask for it. We solicited public input. It's in there that they want to see outdoor dining. They want to see converted alleys. People are asking us for this. Let's help if we can. It's a benefit for the town.
Sounds like the question is, who's our Luca proxy? Who's going to go tell them? Make an offer.
Be careful. Didn't work out well for Luca.
Amy can talk to them and say, put something down, you know, put something down. And if it's $1,200 a month, Joe Collins ain't going for it.
You mean a year?
A year, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
So is, so is that, is that the step? Just a conversation?
One clarification. So I am to reach out to them and say, you need to give us a proposal. Do you want that on your February 7th regular council meeting as an agenda?
Yes, please.
Well, they'd have to get the proposal.
They'd have to get it pretty quick.
Yeah.
Well, ask them, can you do it February or March?
Ask them if they want to do one. And if so, how long would it take them to vote one together up here before the board? I don't want to give them arbitrary time. I'll make sure that they thought this thing out before they come rushing in.